Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and folks in the audience, thank you for joining us. Tonight, we're having a little bit early meeting for a special reason. We have some people that are willing to be appointed to our fire department to help for the greater well-being of the whole community, so we definitely welcome that. So with that, I'd like to turn this over to Chief Ron Landry.
Good evening. Tonight, I would like to continue my practice of recognizing new appointments or individuals who have been promoted either through the fire department or the police department. Tonight, we have the newest appointment, a new fireman, relatively new to Millville, but he's been here for a few years. I'd like to bring up Josh Montesson. Josh has been with us for a few years as an on-call fireperson. Recently, he has been appointed as a full-time fireperson in town. He is a graduate of the District 7 Massachusetts Firefighting Academy. He does hold a bachelor's degree in fire science, which makes him not only a great fireman, but makes him a educated fireman as well. He's a basic EMT, so he's going to fit right in with our EMT schedule, so we don't have any issues with training. He's also a member of the National Guard, where he's received numerous training opportunities in different fire sciences, so it makes him actually extremely qualified as a beginning private on the fire department. So he's here today with his parents, Paula and Joe, so I'd like to bring up Paula, and if she could actually pin the new badge on Private Montessy. Here you go.
No, it's fine.
First and foremost, I'd like to thank the town, specifically Chief Landry, for affording me the opportunity to work in the town in which I grew up. I've been here my whole life. I've been on the fire department, like the chief said, I've been on seven years as a call guy, and I'm confident I'll be able to provide the best level of care for the townspeople, and that's it.
Thank you.
Steve? Fire Department, through the recent years, has gone through many changes. We've only gotten better, we continue to do better. Tonight's promotion is to Captain Ferron. He's going to be elevated to the rank of deputy chief. It's a very important rank that I hold dear to the management system that we have. The accountability within the fire service continues to grow, so Steve is going to add that leg of responsibility to the management side of the fire service. He's been with us for over 20 years, been an on-call for many years, been a full-time fireman for, I believe, 19 years.
Yeah, something like that.
He is the, currently, he's the training officer. He is the EMS coordinator. He's a basic EMT. He is the fire inspector in town as well. He is the CPR first responder instructor. I continue to give him more roles and more responsibilities as we work more closely together, and I think the relationship is done very well, and he certainly has grown to a point where he can accept this new challenge of being the deputy chief. So learning curve for that next step in his advancement, I think he's going to handle it with no problem at all. I think he's more than competent to assume the role of deputy chief, so I would like to welcome chief, deputy chief Captain Ferron to Millville Fire Department. He's already here, but it's his new role, so I think he's going to do extremely well. So I'd like to present him to the board, and Steve, if you would say a few words.
Thank you very much. Well, first and foremost, I'd like to thank Chief Landry for this new opportunity to serve the town of Millville, and anyone that passes through that may need our assistance in any way. I'd also like to thank my family for being here this evening and their continued support, and I accept this new challenge, and I think the communication that Chief Landry and I have had over the last two and a half years that he's been the chief has been very good. And I'd also like to thank the area chiefs that have come to support us this evening, and we have a great working relationship through the mutual aid program, which continues to strengthen and grow all the time. And that's about it. Just thank you very much. And before I forget, we also have refreshments over at the fire station for everyone that wants to come afterwards. There's coffee and cake over there for anyone that'd like to join us.
We also need a pinning of the badge for Deputy Chief Ferron. It's a tradition we started maybe eight years ago. I believe everyone should be recognized when they're appointed and certainly promoted, so it's another great opportunity to demonstrate to the town who we've hired in the direction we're going. So if Mr. Ferron would come up. I too would like to thank the fire chiefs from Utchbridge, Douglas, Sutton, and Deputy Chief from Menden for appearing. It just shows the unity we have in mutual aid, so certainly thank them for coming as well. Thank you.
Chief, did you have one other, or did the third gentleman couldn't make it?
Yes, we did have a third candidate tonight, Lieutenant Malali, Brian, his brother Paul. He's been elevated to the rank of lieutenant. Unfortunately, he had another family commitment tonight, so we couldn't be here, so I'd like to welcome him aboard as our newest lieutenant for on-call service. He's been performing the job for a couple of months, he's doing very well. His attendance has been great. He's another great asset to the fire department, so we continue to grow, and I think we're doing much better. We're just going to get much better in the future, too. Thanks.
Thank you. On behalf of the selectmen, I'd like to thank everybody for the support for these fine gentlemen, and known Steve for a lot of years, so I know we definitely have a good choice, and I do know some of the roots and some of the family that Josh is with, so I do believe that there's definitely another good choice there, so I want to thank those two, and also Paul Malali for their services, and a special thank you for the National Guard Service. And anybody else has any other comments? We were hoping that the town clerk would be here to sway you in. She's not here as of yet. You're welcome to hang for a few minutes if you'd like. Did she say?
No, she was reminded yesterday that it was at 6:30.
Yeah, okay, so I don't know if she's running late, but unfortunately, she's not here right now, so I apologize. That's about it. Unless Chief has anything else, I think that was it for him.
Take a recess until 7:00?
Yep, yep. Take a 20-minute recess, continue our regular meeting at 7:00. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and thank you for joining the selectmen for the regular meeting. Would everyone please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Our pledge to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands is one nation under one law, indivisible and universal. Bob Baker's not here this evening, and he asked, he can't be for business reasons, he asked if we could table the reorganization until the April 22nd meeting, so he could be here to vote. So in respect to that, I'd look for that motion.
We organize on April 22nd.
22nd.
So we have a full board present.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next announcements, we have, thank you, thank you to everyone who came out to vote at the annual town election yesterday. The following individuals were elected as follows. We have selectmen for three-year term was John Law and Robert Baker. Board of Health for a three-year term was Dustin Ciccarelli. Library trustee was Pam Thistle. Planning Board for five-year term, Richard Hurtel. Highway Surveyor, three-year term, Brian Malali. Trustee of the Veterans Memorial Park, three-year term, Richard Hurtel. Trustee to the Veterans Memorial Park, one-year unexpired term, non-veteran, Ellen Bowen. Blackstone Millville Regional School District, Millville representative for a four-year term, Jane Reggio. And the Blackstone Millville Regional District School Committee, Blackstone representative, four-year term, Georgette Jarrett, and who is replacing Michael Buckley. So thank you to everybody that ran, and congratulations to the ones that won, and thank you for wanting to serve the town. Second, the Board of Selectmen will hold a joint meeting with the Finance Committee tomorrow night at August 9th at 7:00 PM to continue FY15 budget discussions and review financial articles on the town meeting warrants. The Board encourages residents to attend, so.
Let's see the lines.
Oh, yeah, that's a typo.
What is?
Yeah, I read August.
A long S.
Yeah, and I read it and didn't even pay attention to it.
Wish to thank them.
How do you like that? So April night, tomorrow night. Don't come in August, we'll probably be somewhere on the beach. So, and then also, town offices are closed on Monday, April 21st, in observance of Patriot's Day, and the Board's next regular meeting will be held Tuesday, April 22nd. Next, we have approval of minutes and warrants. First is March 17th, 2014, at 7:00 PM.
I have a question on the, on the report of the 17th, and that's on page two, it's on the town clerk, second sentence, second line, refers to Town Clerk Masha Farrell.
Yep. Well, Masha, why don't you?
We'll fix that, no worries.
With that correction, I would make a motion to approve the minutes of March 17th.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have March 20th, 2014, at 14, at 7:00 PM, also.
Under the motion now, we accept the minutes for March 20th, 7:00 PM.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have May 6th, 2013, that's not a typo, and executive session, and all with present.
Motion to approve.
May 6th.
All in favor?
Aye.
November 4th, 2013, executive session also.
This is April 3rd.
Hmm?
April 3rd, you said?
November 4th.
November 4th.
Yep.
I make the motion to accept the minutes for November 4th.
I'll second that one.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Next, we have March 3rd, 2014, and that was also an executive session.
Motion to approve the minutes of March 3rd, executive session.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. And last is April 3rd, 2014, at 6:00 PM and at 6:30 PM.
I make the motion to accept the minutes for April 3rd at 6, and April 3rd at 6:30.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Warrants?
Yes, we do. There are three warrants. First is the payroll warrant for the pay period ending April 5th, 2014, in the amount of $32,012.67. Next are the vendor warrants dated April 7th, 2014, in the amount of $34,955.28. And third are the payroll deductions for the pay period March 24th, 2014, in the amount of $4,234.72.
Motion to approve warrants, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay, next, we have reports of town officials. First on the list is the planning board.
So, welcome, welcome to the planning board, and just so everyone knows, this is Joe Laiden on Town Planner.
So, I guess, Joe Laiden, Town Planner. I have three members of the planning board behind me, and, and John Atlee, Vice Chair of the Planning Board. So thank you for the opportunity to speak with the Board of Selectmen about, sort of touching base on what's going on with the planning board and looking ahead to the 2014. One of the, just from a larger perspective, one of the things the planning board has been doing, and we've had a couple internal workshops, even though it's a public meeting and we welcome people to attend, the planning board has started to look at the master plan. It's something that I've been working with the last couple of years to update, and it's at the point where I needed some guidance from the board on how to proceed. One of the main things is that the virtual 1996 master plan, there's a lot of data that is useful, but also a lot of data that is just out of date. You know, you're talking about demographics, populations, socioeconomic statistics, building statistics, a lot of things that basically is sort of grunt work of just updating to make sure that, you know, you're updating facts and figures referenced in the plan. Also, there's a lot of goals and objectives that were in the master plan that need to sort of be checked as far as, you know, are they still applicable? And the planning board has been discussing these goals and trying to get an idea as far as whether they're still relevant, and the conclusion of the planning board was that, just as in 1996, they are very relevant because they're broad-based goals and objectives, things that talk about diversifying the economy, talking about economic development in our village center, talk about setting aside open space, about need for schools, and protecting the environment. And our conclusion was that the goals and objectives of 1996 really hasn't changed because while the population from a statistical perspective has changed, you know, as far as a percent increase, you know, like 26% increase in population, we're still a small town, and that the challenges that were before the town in 1996 are still in front of the town, and if anything, a little bit more significant, as in more of a reliance on residential taxes, lots of opportunity for expanding our non-residential sector of the economy, and, you know, opportunities that are recreation and sort of natural resource-based. The master plan has said, you know, Millville is a bedroom community, a lot of the things didn't change. So what the Board decided, rather than sort of throwing out all these statistics, having a series of open sessions that then are inviting people, and, you know, the original breakdown that I gave for the Board was to have a series of workshops that then go over demographics, go over conservation issues, go over economic development, and the Board felt that those issues really, because they really hadn't changed, let's focus more on getting from the town what the town really needs. And so we've been, over the last couple of months, working and having discussions, trying to get at, so that I can then sort of assist as planner, what are the main goals and that the town needs to be in? The intent of this is to get a better feeling from the planning board as far as what to look at, to then be able to engage Board of Selectmen and other boards, because there are two different ways to view a master plan. Basically, starting from a full rewrite, starting with statistics, saying, here's where your population is, here's how it's growing, your school age population, and trying to see trends. The Board had this, really this light bulb that went off and said, you know what, we need to get at it from a different perspective, and really start engaging the town members and board members as far as really, what do people want? And by starting off going after statistics and really just throwing numbers, we're not really getting in an efficient manner what we want. And so the idea that started along this rewrite of the master plan was that really the update is like the appendix. So one of the main things with plans is, it's very easy for them to sit on a shelf, for them, people to read through and say, this thing is as dry as eating flour, and it just gets shelved. And so we're trying to sort of spin it on its end and say, the appendix is basically the data, but let's get at the heart of the matter. So that's part of what we're doing now. Every second meeting of the month is basically a workshop where we start to tackle some of these issues. At our last meeting, we brought out the town map and just started discussing concepts, because the idea, one of the things that was raised was, well, we want to encourage economic development. We've had public meetings where people have said, you know what, everything being a special permit, it's too hard to sort of come in, and you have to spend money in order to be in front of the Board for something that really is in some level discretionary, there's no clear path. And so in preparation of trying to bring things to a larger group of the town where we can invite people, the Board is trying to just grab it, sort of get its hands around some concepts to then float to the public, and, you know, Millville's a small town. We have a small area where we would want development, we have defined resources in the Blackstone River, and we have, you know, a small-town area-wise where a lot of it's forested. So from a planning perspective, you know, we're fairly consolidated as far as, you know, a broad spectrum of what could be in this master plan. And so in the next couple of months, you know, you can expect a planning board, myself, reaching out to start to get more dialogue from residents as well as other boards, because the planning board itself is working through how to sort of approach this in a manner that will succinctly get at what the town really wants, because that's the main thing A lot of different concepts, and this is also based on when CMRPC was assisting us. There's a lot of opportunities for the state to provide assistance, but the towns need to know what they want. And the common denominator is, does a town have a master plan? We don't need to go through, and, you know, and I was on, the planners have a list surf where it's an email group, you know, towns are throwing out values of $120,000 to undertake a master plan. There's no defined standard outside of hitting certain topics that need to be in that master plan. Millville hasn't changed that drastically that we can't rely on the work that was done, even though we're, you know, we're coming up, I count 20 years, there's no reason why that can't serve the basis in us to be very strategic in saying, here's really what our vision is for Millville. And that will allow us within the next year really to provide something to the town for next annual town meeting, to serve the basis for not only going after grants, but also zoning. We could easily come in with zoning changes to the town that then define, well, here's what we want to do for the downtown area. But if we don't have some sort of concise vision that we can say, you know, just some sort of, you know, catchphrase, then it's something that residents at town meeting are, it's very difficult for them to see what, how it fits together. And that's really where the planning board is, where we're sort of in this mini visioning phase, trying to identify what are some of the goals so that the Board has a consensus in the direction. But then we can relay that to the community and to get feedback and to start to develop this over the next six months to eight months. So that's one of the things we've been working on, sort of in a, on a longer timeframe. Another thing that we've been working on is that there's a couple subdivisions that have, mainly because the economy been, not necessarily stagnating, but there's been such delay in completing them, that they're right there at the finish line, and we need to work with them to get it over the finish line, so that they can have a finished product that then can come in front of the town meeting for acceptance. That's, last year, that took a lot of time, and now that we're back in spring, we're going to be engaged with that developer to try to push him through to resolve these issues, because the last thing we want to do is have the town and then be in the position of saying, okay, they didn't finish, now we have to worry about accessing a bond and not finishing, and then that can be its own headache. Also, there's a subdivision that's up on Thayer Street that the planning board approved in 2006 that has been the topic of various different scenarios. Departments have been emailed about 55 and over development, a potential 4EB, and most recently, I've been talking with someone who's looking at purchasing that property and reducing that from the 17-lot subdivision down to seven or eight, which is a significant reduction, not only from impact to the environment, the property, but also to schools. I mean, talking about 10 less households, and we all know that each house does not pay for the kids that go to the school. So that, I'm working with them to finalize a plan that will be submitted to the planning board for basically superseding that 17-lot subdivision while maintaining access to adjacent town space, and also there's a great connection between land that is associated with the elementary school and then land that's set aside to the norm. So we're working through some issues, and they're engaging engineers so that they can complete and actually submit an application. complete and actually submit an application. We've had a couple months of some very interesting zoning issues that have come up. It's shed light on, I think, some existing zoning language that hadn't really been the topic of examination because it hadn't really come to the forefront, that highlighted that some of the language we have maybe is inexact. And the implications of that really are that by having and working through, especially with the interim building inspector and town council and how, and working on a defined path to tackle these, creates an opportunity for really defining in a uniform manner how to address some of these issues that the planning board itself has been tackling with on how to address and bring to people's attention businesses that may not have the appropriate permits, and no fault of their own because there's different layers of approvals that towns may give, anywhere from a business certificate to a license, which don't necessarily cross over into the zoning realm. And so there's opportunities for providing some direction for those businesses to bring them in compliance, but also for addressing deficiencies in the zoning bylaw that as a result of looking into these issues, you know, come to the surface. And also, it's, one of the things that, you know, being in Millville, we've seen is that there's a lot of work on the Blackstone Valley bikeway that's going on in Blackstone, specifically the bridges. They have, just this past Thursday, attended a meeting in Blackstone where DCR, Department of Conservation and Recreation, provided a presentation on the status of the bikeway. And the presentation basically said that the intent is to finish this component from Oxbridge through Millville and Blackstone by the fall of 2016. That timeframe has slipped from what they originally stated and is primarily due to the complexities associated with the bridge, the various bridges, including the Triad Bridge, and solving some of those engineering because of the fact that they thought they could have let contracts out at the same time for contractors to work on the bridges at the same time as the surfaces, but they realized that the amount of mobilization needed for the bridges, there would be no place for people working on the paths to actually work. So they have to get far enough along on the bridges and then start on the paths. The work in Millville is slated to be advertised over the summer for start of construction, late summer into the fall. And that's something that is definitely going to be noticeable as far as the impact on Millville as far as not only construction vehicles, but also, we were informed by residents, there's a lot of dumping that happens along the trail and ATV use that is very disruptive. Those are all things that by cleaning things up, having people on an active path are really going to be reduced, especially because there'll be bollards or other things to prevent vehicles from getting on. DCR did say that they'd be looking to working with the towns for signage programs. That gives us an opportunity to maybe identify some sites within Millville that we want to direct people to and having some sort of kiosk at the trailhead in the parking area that can maybe serve as information for people who maybe do want to walk down. There's not going to be many opportunities for grabbing a soda or ice cream. You know, we're not talking about, we're not going to make a living in solving all our financial issues off of a bikeway, but something that is a service that can support some of our local businesses, anything that we can do to support those businesses, you know, is the plus. Trying to think as far as whether there's anything else that...
I think you've covered just about everything, Joe. Really, it's a lot of work. We've been working a lot of hours, we've spent down here. And I'd like to publicly thank Joe for the great job that he does for the town of Millville as the planner and his expertise, helping the board itself get through all the zoning changes that we're trying to do and update everything, bring everything up to date. Like, everything's been since the 1990s and we're trying to bring everything up today. It's a lot of work. I know all the board members have been right there, every meeting, and Joe's been right there. And I'd like to extend an invitation to anyone, townspeople, selectmen, come to any one of our meetings. Anyone has any ideas, let us know.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
I'm not sure if you mentioned, did you change your meeting dates or...
Yes.
The same night as ours, yes.
Yeah, that's the...
Yeah, and previously, I worked in Weston. And I have reduced my commute by anywhere from an hour to an hour and a half a route. So I'm getting about almost three hours back in my life. I'm now the town planner in Grafton. So as a result, their meetings, of course, are when the planning board normally met, so the board was very courteous and just shifting. One of the things, actually, the side benefit is that many of the issues, there's a lot of cross-pollination as far as dealing with the same Chamber of Commerce. I'm dealing with different Senator Moores, though. At least I don't have to forget their last name, I just have to try to remember their first name. But bikeway issues, land use issues, dealing with CMRPC, there's a lot of overlap that previously working in the Metro West area, I didn't have the access to the regional staff that now I do. And one of the things that's going to be coming up that Millville really hasn't had too much to deal with because of the nature that we are a smaller town, but that there's going to be a regional effort to do a housing plan. So that's an effort that I'll be working on that will have some overlap in Millville as well and be able to bring some, you know, information and assistance to Millville.
Right. Thank you.
It seems to me that there's a moving, the master plan's a moving target. Do we have specific targets as to dates, deadlines, when we would like to have input from the town? Do we have a specific plan in that regard?
So that's one of the things that we're working on. I presented a calendar that, you know, for us to try to deal with, and that's when we sort of, and I could tell as I was sort of working through some things with the members that I was losing them because, you know, it's sort of like discussing, or it's sort of like state mandates. It's like, okay, you know, we're not addressing what we as the town of Millville really want. And I was trying to engage them as far as, like, here's how the population has changed, here's really where incomes have changed, growth and labor market and all this stuff. And that's sort of like, you know, it's boring people to death with statistics that have no daily relevance. And so that's what we're in the process of sort of turning around. You know, I can work on that on the side and bring up, bring all these tables up to date. But with the planning board, the main thing is trying to identify, you know, what are the main topics we want to get at? And for planning boards to come out and to engage other people, residents, other boards, the board itself has to have some level of consensus as far as what are the important issues we need to try to tackle? And that's where the board is right now, just trying to get a handle on what are the important components. I have mentally a deadline of a year from now, next year to have this all together because for annual town meeting, we have some zoning changes that then are based on that. So coming up late spring over the summer, but then really then wrapping into the fall with the large amount of public input, that's sort of the general timeframe that I've marked down. Some of the preliminary stuff, you know, that's the idea of getting that late spring and then into the summer and then people taking the break, then allows time to digest and work on that so that come September, when everyone's back, you know, it's constructive and that people can see like really where things end up being. And also, that allows time for me to work with CMRPC using two different fiscal years to get assistance, namely unmapping and some other things. So we have a technical assistance application that they have approved, and that spans sort of both fiscal years, June, July into August, September. So that then allows for the majority of the work to be done by the time summer ends so that we get into fall and really consolidate everything, get input. Realistically, I think what people are going to find is that, just as the board concluded, the goals and objectives in 20, it's hard to say 19. It's like going from 13 to 14. You always want to write 13. Same thing thinking about going back to the 1990s. The town, when they did that master plan, I think really had a good set of goals and objectives. And that I think people are going to find that they're still extremely relevant. There are some things that have changed, maybe some priorities have changed, but on the whole, the document is not something that is irrelevant to the needs of Millville today. And the important thing is updating it in a manner that is concise, it is reader-friendly, and then really expresses in a very succinct way, almost like it's an executive summary, what really is important to the town. Because that's what we need, that's what we need to go to our state reps, that's what we need to go to DOT, DCR, mass housing, DHCD. If there's any funding opportunities, we need to point to a document. And that's the overall goal.
Personally, I would like to see a document that's laid out in a milestones fashion. If the planning board could do that, I'd be comfortable...
I'd rather have a sheet of paper this big that basically is something we can put on the wall and say, this is the master plan. And then all the documents and tables that support it is an appendix at the end, which if people want to see how many building permits changed from 1995 through 2014, it's there. But is that going to be something that guides the goals and policies? No. So that's what the board had basically had a consensus that, that's how we want to update. Now let's try to have a discussion for defining what we really want as a town and as a board. And then go forward and engage the community from there.
No, you guys are doing great, no. It's a lot of hard work, I know.
It is a lot of work.
You do a lot of work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Lincoln Bob and a Veterans Agent.
Thank you.
I'll go over this past year and then present what's on top there. The chapter 115 loads of the town of Millville this past year dropped two people. I met with numerous veterans on a variety of issues, took some people to the hospital and doctor's appointments, got an electric wheelchair for somebody that needed one, got some heating oil at a discounted price for a veteran that was having a tough time, and made numerous house visits. There are not a lot of people in Millville that come forward looking for assistance. I had quite a few inquiries, but people are very reluctant to sit down and tell you their personal problems. So our financial impact is a little bit less, but it's still there. Any questions on that? I came some time ago and presented this piece of paper to you in just a verbal form. I've had a couple discussions with the town accountant, and I'd just like to read this if I could.
Yeah.
I'm hoping to establish a Millville Veterans Assistance Fund. And it reads as follows, "To see if the Board of Selectmen would vote to establish an account set up by the town accountant to hold money for the assistance of Millville veterans. This fund would be financed through donations from any individual or group who wishes to help support a Millville veteran and/or a veteran dependent in a time of need. All funds to be held by the town of Millville and distributed only under the discretion of the Veterans Agent or Veterans Service Officer with the approval by town accountant. Any existing balance would be a matter of public record, and said account would be set up such that all donated funds would be available for Millville veterans in need and not mingled with the general fund. The purpose would be to help those veterans and their families in a time of immediate need or crisis when other sources are too slow or not available. Sometimes distributed money may be replaced by those receiving it when qualifying benefits are received from another source, and sometimes it would be an outright grant. All distributions would be of a non-public nature, known only to the Veterans Agent, the town accountant, those who sign the vouchers, and the recipients themselves, and it should remain anonymous permanently. Once the fund is established, it would be promoted by the Veterans Agent through various means, with all funds being paid directly to the town of Millville Veterans Assistance Fund. If donations exceed expectations and withdrawals do not deplete the fund, then a cap of some sort might be in order. This would be determined either at the inception or when said fund was shown to be sufficient." A possible third option, I'm somewhat reluctant to mention, would be, and again, we do not want to discourage participation in donations by making this too broad of an issue, might be a donation to a certified, recognized veterans charity like Wounded Warriors if the fund exceeded a preset limit. I would like to emphasize that this needs to be done in such a fashion that donators are confident their donations are only for veterans in need, and such that the Office of the Millville Veteran Services will be above reproach, both now and forever, as far as collecting and distribution of the fund. I would be willing to accept any ideas or changes to this proposal and work with other departments, boards, or individuals, as long as the intent and the privacy of this proposal is not changed. The man didn't seem to think this needed to be on the town warrant. It's something the selectmen can do all by themselves. So I'm asking that. At some point, you have some discussion and see if we can do something with this.
Okay.
Do other area towns have a similar program?
Some towns do, some towns don't have anything, some towns work closely with the local VFW or a similar organization. I tried and would be happy to try again to do something like this with our newly reformed VFW, but they were not willing to maintain the privacy of the individuals receiving the funds. So I couldn't go forward with that.
I don't blame you.
I, this office has to maintain strict confidentiality, and so our job is to help people out in times of need, not get a pat on the back.
Do you know of other communities, if they have established guidelines that we can start looking at to determine, you know, what would look best in our community?
I go to an annual training up in Lunenburg the last few years, and I've asked a wide variety of people in my capacity, and it depends a great deal on the size of the community, the affluence of the community, the number of veterans in the community... the affluence of the community, the number of veterans in the community, and whether or not this position is a full-time position. Some towns have a very active group, not just the VFW, but the American Legion and several other veterans organizations that have a fund already established, and they would get some guidance from the Veterans Officer and then, you know, distribute funds through him.
I'm just wondering if another town had a written policy to, to help us design ours, to make it mean.
I have, I have tried for the last three years to get something exactly like that to make it easy for you to see this through, because to me, the most important paragraph here was the one at the end that gives confidence to the people donating money that it's going strictly to veterans and not getting chucked into the general fund by whatever. And that while the discretion of spending the money is a responsibility of the Veterans Agent, whether it's myself or somebody in the future, there is enough oversight that there's never, ever a question, everything's above board. And I think that, you know, each community has to address that with the individuals they have and, and the organizations they work with. At present, we don't have one. I have been doing this nine years now, and in nine years, I've only had one instance where I felt, boy, it'd be nice to have a little bank account right now. And I did some finagling and managed to help out the person that needed it. The state helped some, and the town of Millville helped some, and one of the local oil companies was very gracious and sold us oil at cost, and he's mentioned in my annual report. But there's no accounting for what may arise, and, you know, sometimes there's, there's a problem and you can solve it tonight.
Yep.
And they'll get money back from the VA or from the state under Chapter 115 benefits. But we all know when, you know, for instance, your heating oil tank runs dry, you can't wait fourteen days for a check to be cut, you gotta get the oil guy there tonight, kinda thing. So that's the intent of this. And I don't expect an answer to that. I'm happy to work with you, I talked about it at, at some extent with Marilyn, and she has the same concerns I do as far as bulletproofing it, but sees the need. And it is done quite a few times.
I'm honestly, I'm all with you on this. I agree that I think when people pay their taxes, we talked about this, having something in there to, to kinda give back.
Right.
And I think people, I think people in town would at, at various denominations, because, you know, whatever they could, I think people see that and they say, "Yes, I want to help." And I think, I'd like to see this a reality. I question though how, like if someone came in and asked us for vouchers, like hotwares, public records versus, you know, how can we make sure that that remains?
What do you mean?
If the, if the fund is under the direction of the Veterans Services Officer, that would fall under, I would hope, mass general law and the confidentiality would be protected.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. No, and that's what I wanna make sure, 'cause I know people can come in and request, you know, vouchers for, or to look at your paperwork for this or that, so I just wanna make sure that, that that is kept.
Well, we kinda have this issue now, and I don't know exactly how the law deals with it, but I submit vouchers on a, we'll say, monthly basis, and they have people's names on them.
Yes, I see them.
And you sign them.
Yes, I see them.
And Lisa sees them, and Marilyn sees them, and I, I'm bound by confidentiality, I'm assuming you are, and that's why, you know, the...
No, I don't.
I'm very concerned about how people perceive me, because I'm the Veterans Agent right now, and I don't want anyone saying, "Oh, that guy's sticking ten bucks in his pocket," or "I put cash in and, and never made it into the fund," or "He helped out so-and-so." So the oversight would be, I go to the town accountant and say, "Here's my situation, this is what I wanna do, would you support me on this?" And, you know, they say yes.
Yeah.
If she says no, then I might come and ask the Speaker to, you know, an executive session. And, and if I get shot down, hey, I get shot down, but at this point, I'm the person you put in, in a position of trust trying to help people out and, and use my common sense and discretion. And as you do this job more and more, you hear some stories, you meet some people, and you gotta weed out the good from the bad and make good choices.
I think you got some nice checks and balances in here, like you just said, so that, you know, when, it's always, it's on the up and up.
The whole thing is workable.
People feel confident.
How do we go about doing, what steps do we need to take?
I mean, if you know...
Well, maybe this board now needs to say, "Lincoln, the Veterans Service Officer gave us this, Marilyn, how can we do it, what do you wanna see?" And it's not like the bank checkbook or savings book goes to my house, it sits out here in the town hall. I still would have to clear with the town accountant, it's not gonna go through a voucher to this board to sit down and wait, I can, that's what we're trying to get around right now.
If we could find that...
The state of Massachusetts, excuse me for interrupting, the state of Massachusetts in Chapter 115 has a wide latitude of help available. For instance, if, if a homeless veteran came to Millville and established a residency here and said, "I want to rent the second floor apartment at, at, you know, Three Basely Avenue, I need first months, last months, and a security deposit, I have a job over here, but I haven't got any money and this guy won't let me in," I can go to the Boston and say, "Here's the situation," and they'll say, "Cut him a check for first months, last months, and a security deposit." And the town's not on the hook for any of it except the, the typical twenty-five percent. So there are many instances where this would never come up, but, you know, occasionally somebody doesn't qualify, but they need help to get over a hump. It's a compassionate fund, it's not a get-around-the-law fund, you know?
If we could find out some communities, maybe, you know, Helen or Marilyn can do some legwork and find out if they have a written policy in place, what is the routine, just so we have it, so that we can kinda just adopt it into our policies and procedures to, for the checks and balances, for the safeguards of privacy, so that, you know, those are in place, and then that we can, you know, that we can develop it and go forward and, and establish this.
I apologize for not having you here.
No, it's not.
I have tried, and, and when people go to those meetings and, you know, "Oh, yeah, call me," and then you don't get a response.
And a lot of times, they might not, it might just be sitting in a policy book somewhere, you know, or procedural books, you know?
Not every town works the same way we do, you know?
Nope.
I can approach the guy in, in Milford, and Fletcher up in Mendon, who's Regional with Hope Dale, and see if they have anything set up, I don't know.
Or maybe using this as a guideline to develop our own.
I would also add as, as a note, that has nothing to do with this, in my preparation for a meeting with the Finance Committee on this year's budget, I visited a number of towns when I was out and about doing business and inquired as to what your budget is for veterans and, and what the agent's salary is and, and the office expenses and so on, because there was somebody in here last summer wanting, suggesting that maybe Millville should regionalize. And, and my experience on this little travel, every town that regionalized had significantly more expense than the towns that haven't, just to support the office and the, and the staff and so on, so.
Is it broken?
Is what broken?
Our office?
Um, I haven't found it yet.
They don't have it.
Then, then it's fine, I mean, if it's working for us and it's working for the agency.
I think it works pretty well.
Then I think, then we, I think we're good.
So hash it out, let me know, I'll come back another time.
Thanks for the input, thanks for doing what you do.
Well, this is just my verbiage, but I thought about it an awful lot.
I think your attempt at this is commendable.
I think it's a great idea, and, and the part about getting too much, I don't know how to deal with that, but you certainly don't wanna discourage people.
Right. It would be wonderful if we could have it in place, and I know we've got a lot on our plate in the next month and two, but, so that when those bills go out in the first quarter preliminary, that maybe something could be in there, 'cause that would help establish us for the winter.
Well, if we do that, then you definitely wanna speak with Lisa and Marcia, because I don't wanna complicate their jobs at all. And Lisa, I discussed it with her, and she said, "I have a hard enough time dealing with checks that aren't exactly for the bill that's included in the envelope, trying to figure out what that extra money is for." So it, it needs to be set up such that...
It's a second check, drop.
You know, with, with some information on TV or whatever, that, you know, this is completely separate and has nothing to do with your taxes, please don't write one check for me.
Right, but I think if an information sheet went home, or a form or something that they could write, how much they were donating and attach a separate check, then that could probably, that could probably work. I mean, we can work with them. I just, I'm just thinking, I mean, you're talking heating, you're talking this, you're talking grocery, you're talking, you know, I mean, what better time than to start the fund with that first mailing, 'cause we mail it out to everybody, and to have money for next winter for individuals that may need it, rather than doing a whole second, a, a separate mailing, and, and, you know, it's, it's just a thought, I mean, if it's, if we're gonna make it a reality, then I don't drag our heels, let's get it done so that it's there for next...
Next winter.
Yeah, our next mass mailing, which is, just happens to be our tax bills, so.
See what we can do. We got some homework. You're a two-phone guy, huh? You're a two-phone guy, huh?
One's my personal, one's my business, I can't be without my job, I'm on call twenty-four seven, so. It's nature of the beast.
Oh, I also turned my phone back in this year, so that's my cellphone on the web.
Helen, could you check with Lisa and Marcia?
Yeah, I'll work with them.
Any concerns that they may have so that we can, you know, problem solve?
I'm already aware of Lisa's concerns, I think it's, it's really gonna have to be highlighted that it has to be a separate check. And if it, if the amount comes in on one check, it's going to be returned to the resident.
Yeah, so maybe it's, you know, this shouldn't create a burden for anybody...
Right.
That doesn't exist now, so I, I would really like to work with Lisa and make sure that doesn't happen.
Make that clear.
If it has to be, if the notice goes out and says, "We don't want anything right now, this is an informational thing."
Right.
If you wanna stop at the town hall or whatever, and, and it needs to be very clear, it has to be made out to, and this is where Marilyn comes in, not just the town of Millville.
Right. And depending on how much people, they may wanna pop in and do it, because then a receipt can be...
And, and I don't know whether it would be tax deductible or not, but that's something to ask Marilyn, it might be.
It probably would be.
I would think it would be, yeah.
Yeah, so people may want a receipt, so that second...
Right.
Check would, you know, would serve as that.
Gotta little, do a little homework here.
Yeah.
Well, I know, but I've been saying I'm gonna do this for a long time, so I said, "Well, I gotta go Tuesday night, I'll have something ready."
Thank you very much for...
Thank you, any...
Thank you, thank you, Lincoln, you deserve it.
First public forum, we have Dennis Pimenta.
Good evening, Dennis Pimenta from Eleven Wildwood Circle. I sent you a letter last month stating that I would be interested in a Veterans Agent position if it be considered, and I'm just here to follow up with that. I am a twenty-year Millville resident, I'm a disabled veteran, and I'm a life member of the Disabled American Veterans. I think I could do a reasonable job, Lincoln does a great job, I would just like to be considered for it if the position is available at any time. Thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Awesome idea.
Awesome. All right, next we have Mark Fernandez.
Can I bring my wife?
Yeah.
She wants to sit with me. This is our...
Hi.
She doesn't like it, she's just gonna start kissing everybody, so.
Yeah.
Better watch your TV. That's what she said, she's on TV, she looks good, I said, "All right." Um, I heard the license was ready, come down and pick it up?
No.
You could try.
No, it wasn't.
Well, our attorney still has all the information, he's trying to go through, so everything's...
Lot of paperwork.
Legal, and he is, he is, he needs a little bit more time, he wrote here, "Yeah, I need a little more time, and this, the associate working on, on the matter needs additional information from the town in order to complete," which we're getting him that information right now, so, not from us, from planning, you know, planning and zoning laws, you know?
Yeah, just, you know, after I left the meeting, 'cause, you know, it's like I'm starting to be an expert at this stuff, I know, one day maybe I can actually sit one of these seats, maybe, you know, you learn enough stuff, if you guys retire, you know?
Yeah.
You know, it occurred to me that, you know, maybe there's questions that you guys wanted to ask me, because, you know, I started thinking about it, and I'm going through all the old minutes, and it's like, I'm the only guy that's been here...
Right.
For fifteen years, you know, so you guys are all new.
Yeah.
So I'm the one who kinda like knows like the most of what's been going on.
Mm-hmm.
So, you know, because over the years, what's, what's been interesting about Mark's garages, you ever go somewhere and you kinda felt a little left out or you're in the wrong place, then someone comes up to you and, you know, makes you feel comfortable? You ever have that happen to you, I think we all have, right?
Yeah.
What happened to me, and, right here in this room, when, back in ninety-seven, ninety-eight, I didn't really know anybody, there were some people on the board, the lady's in with Mary, I think, she knew my family, she knew some people in my family, and I didn't, I didn't, I thought she looked familiar, but after the meeting, you know, they, they approved the transfer of the license, and they, people came up to me, they shook my hand, and, "Nice to have you here in town, and, you know, you come from a good family," and, wow, made me feel welcome, made me feel so welcome, I bought a garage, I bought a house, I bought land, that's kinda what happens, right, when you feel good about a place? You know, it's like, you know, my wife told me to stop buying, you know?
Yeah.
But, um, it occurred to me, like, over the years, situations come up, and the location, just mentioning the location, you know, Joe's Garage was there, and it's always been there. And I met, just because of Joe, I met a lot of old timers, Mr. Dean, and they kinda, you know, when I would meet these, these, these old timers, and they, but they would come, and at first, it was kinda a little awkward, like, you know, "Who are you, where's Joe?" You know, and it was like, "I'm a good friend of Joe's." "Oh, you're a good friend of Joe's, you're a friend of mine." And so it kinda always worked out good, the old timers, you know, a lot of them sadly are gone, but issues did come up over the years about too much action up there, a lot of cars, things going in and out, and that's, I think, when you, you know, they say, most businesses fail in the first two years.
Yeah.
So you kinda go, you know, go at it, you know, and it seems like a lot going on, people might be a little shell-shocked, you know, and, you know, so, I don't know, I'd like to think as a good neighbor, I kinda started going, "All right, let me scale it back a little bit, I don't have to, I don't have to do a hundred cars," right? And then, you know, I started thinking, "Maybe I'll put an addition on the garage." And then someone approached me and said, "Oh, you know, that area right there, you know, you might not wanna put an addition." I had to, I drew up some plans and stuff, "Is that the area?" And I said, "Oh, yeah, that's right, yeah, maybe I'll keep it low-key," you know? They don't want ribbons, they didn't want it tarred, I was like, "Wow, really? All right, I won't tar it," you know? Most people drive right by, "Joe's Garage, is it even there? That's the way they kinda want it," you know? So, "Okay, that's okay." And what it turned, actually, the business turned into like an internet business, you know? Or, you know, you would come up to me saying, "I need a van, can I get you a good deal on a van?" "I can get you a really good deal on a van, you got a couple of weeks, go to the auction, I'll get you the van, save you five thousand." "Can you save me five thousand on a van?" "Yeah." "We'll go get at the auction," you know, "You can save me five thousand, yeah, I got a new van, a new vehicle, more money I can save you." So that started working out good. And, you know, I, I started listening to, you know, the gentleman came in and had a complaint, you know, I've never had a conversation with him, other than, like, when I was, you know, during those big snowstorms, I shoveled, like, with my bobcat, I cleared his driveway, you know, 'cause the, the plows would come by...
Yeah.
And plowed people in, and I would do his driveway, my driveway, the other side... And I would do his driveway, my driveway, the other side on Chestnut, I'd do their driveway, clean it up and gotta wait. That's good. But never had a conversation with him. Uh, you know, listening Anyway, but, except I did have one question, one conversation with his wife one day. She just said that, you know, "There shouldn't be a business here." And I just said, "Well, I bought a business here." "And I'm invested over here, you know, I'm sorry," you know?
Yeah.
That was the only conversation I ever had with them. You know, so, but listening to the videos, you know, I, I kinda came down the street like if I was coming out of his driveway and you kinda, you really can't see. You know, you'd have to kinda really go make an investigation if you wanted to see something. And my customers, you know, I never had a customer complain. Uh, the inspections would come. Never had a complaint. No one ever said, you know, "Wow, you know, you're working on cars over here, you got these cars apart over here." You know, no one ever said it. And, I mean, if anyone, if anyone ever came in and said, "Hey, can you do this? Could you do that?" I would do it. You know, it doesn't really matter to me, you know? But, oh, no one's ever really had a complaint. And if there ever was a complaint, I addressed it. There was one piece of paperwork they had in the folder about trees. They said, "Can you plant some, some trees to hide the garage? Use car sales, gonna hide the place." "Sure." You know, it's planted, they, I said, you know, we came up with a plan, I was gonna plant eighteen trees. I think I planted like eighty along all the property, around the back, all around. The, the only question was, they said, "The trees are a little small." But they're kinda big now, they're like six feet. It took a while for them to grow. But some, I was walking the property and, "Oh, they're pretty big, they're getting there." You know, the goal, my goal would be too, is get them big enough so you couldn't even see there's a building or even a piece of property there, if you could. Because, you know, I never, when I, from that location, I never figured that it'd be like streamers and, you know, on that area. But I always figured, because it's always word of mouth, people saying like that, you know? "He just said I can save me five thousand on a van." You know? Who wouldn't wanna save five thousand on a van? You know, especially if you needed one. But that's the business that it kinda turned out to and it worked out good. I know a lot of vehicles, I started thinking about it. You know, because it was, the place is looking a little rundown and, uh, you know, there's never really a good excuse for anything, you know?
No.
But, you know, I, I was involved in a car accident. You know, I messed my shoulder. A lot of times, what happens at, you know, in a small garage, you know, your friend comes up and says, "You know, can, I need a brake job, I don't wanna pay three hundred." You know? "Can you help me out?" Sure. You push the vehicle out that you're working on, you got it taken apart. You know? But then when you're hurting, you know, my shoulder, I guess in reality is I'm getting older, you know? Your knee hurts, it's like, yeah, that's a pain, kinda push that in, push it out. Then you start working outside a little bit, you're working on stuff outside and you go to push it into something else, gets in the garage. And you, you look at it, it's like, you're working on cars. No one ever, nobody complained. You know? Cause no one's even there. You know, I, the, the whole goal was to keep the place hidden. That people, and I thought I was doing a good job. They said, "Is there a garage over there?" I remember a police officer, someone there, I was just talking to him and this was a while back and I said, "Oh, I got a garage over there on Chestnut Road." "Mark's Garage," he says. "I don't have a garage over there." That's, success. Right? The police department, they were, "Well, he doesn't even see there's a garage there." "I think I'm doing a good job." You know? They don't want no business up there. But in that regard, over the years, like I said, they, there's different, uh, meet, uh, boards, you know, a situation came up or someone had a complaint and they, they said, "We'll address this." "All right, I don't have no problem with that." You know? Whatever you want, you know? And I started, I said, regardless, I'm thinking, "You guys must have questions or..." Because like I said, I mean, you guys are relatively new. I mean, I've been here for fifteen years and I think the last time I came when there was an issue, well, other than last year, I don't really remember anybody on the board that's here now. So if you had some questions, I'd like to answer them or, you know, then I think about your job to, you know, sign those licenses, you know? Does anybody have a complaint or, "You have a complaint? All right, uh, Mr. Fernandez, will you, will you fix that?" We'd never say no. Of course. You know? You need something done here or there, if I can help you, I'll help you out. It's just my nature, you know? Uh, you know, it kinda, it actually, you know, it's like, wow. If you, if you see, if I, you know, I'm watching the video and I see someone with a say some things that I think are not really accurate. It's like, wow, why would you say that? Like you talk to me or I'm like this bad guy? You know? It's like, wow. You know, what would you guys think? If someone comes in front, it's like someone coming up to me and saying, someone here is like this really bad guy. And I'm, "Really?" You know? Until you maybe get to know him a little bit and say, "Is that really true?" You know? So it's, I find myself almost saying, "Well, I gotta defend myself." Because I'm not that person.
Well, I mean, what's going on has nothing to do with Mark Fernandez.
Well, so many complaints, if, you know, someone, cause I, I did hear that meeting, you know? And, you know, we all joke around, he has a complaint, he's not gonna get his license. "Hey, you must feel it's Thanksgiving." You know, it's like, you know, "Am I really a bad guy?" or, you know? From this person's point of view, I mean, I mean, from your point of view, if, if someone in the town comes and has a legitimate complaint, that's what I was like with that, that piece of paper, a real complaint. I mean, you, you have to take it serious.
Was the complaint brought to this board or a different board?
Oh, Mr. Farin.
Mr. Farin, he came to a meeting.
Just a verbal.
Yeah.
But it was a verbal, uh, yeah.
That wasn't nice, hurt my feelings.
He just spoke at a public forum. He's allowed to speak.
I know. But you know, you guys, you have to have, you guys are fuming. Someone says, "Hey, this guy's a bad guy." Or, "This guy, he don't care about nothing." I'm like, "Wow, really?"
Well, we, it's not personal. We, yeah.
That's what I'm saying. You know, let me at least speak up for myself, you know? Because if someone can come and say something negative on TV about me, you know? It's like, really?
We sign all the, all the business licenses that come in front of us every year, annually and but everything goes through the zoning board, planning board, then the building department also, the fire department. And with all their approvals, then we sign, so we don't really make
Actually, it's not zoning that's on the paper. He, Mike Fitzpatrick comes for
Right, he's a zoning enforcement officer.
But he's not going there for zoning. He made that very clear to us.
Right, because the zoning, um, bylaws, uh
He's there for a building inspection, which was fine.
Yeah.
He signed.
And you know, our, our issue really is, we never even received the packet in the mail. And I'm sure Helen, you mailed everybody's, but you neglected to mail ours.
Because I had information on file that there was a zoning issue. So it wasn't going to be approved with the zoning issue.
But no, we, we addressed zoning.
Wait one minute?
Yeah.
One minute. Cause the packets that I was saying that we have, because we did our due diligence. Because when you, when I appeared at this meeting and they said, "We're gonna give provisional" and there was like an issue, we didn't know what the issue was. So, we contacted Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Yes.
And he came to the garage.
Yeah.
He said, because he said, "I need this, I need that." We gave it to him. He can't, he took it and he left. Never heard from him again. The next thing we hear is you, your correspondence to us. So, my wife contacted Mr.
Mulvey.
Mulvey. And said, you know, "We got some concerns, Helen says this, you know, according to what you said, we relayed it back to him." And he said, "She's gonna check into it." So.
We had
We didn't get it.
They never responded.
They never responded back.
That the issue's resolved.
Right.
Cause nothing was asked.
So, if we did our due diligence, I, I don't want you guys thinking, "We didn't do anything." We did it.
I don't think anyone here
No.
We did what we were supposed to do.
Nobody here is against you. But what happens is it, it sets policy. We have a procedure that we go through and I apologize that you, that Mr. Fitzpatrick or Mr. Mulvey may not have been more thorough or, but in the end, we have to make sure that we follow what we have to do because you come today and like you said, what happens when the next business comes in? And unfortunately, you're the first. And I, I think I said this to you last time. So that now from here on out, we need to set a precedent and we have to make sure that we follow the rules and regulations under our bylaws and under our zoning laws and under everything that town meeting has approved to go forward. And the next person coming in is gonna have to follow that same thing.
Excuse me, but you know, the provisional license was to, "Can you straighten this out, Mark's Garage?" So we did, we did, we didn't, we didn't, I don't want you guys saying, "He didn't do nothing." We did what we, and then you didn't send the packet, but we did it.
To my, according to my files, there was nothing straightened out. Because I have nothing in writing from any town board or from you indicating that it, it was straightened out.
Because we contacted Mr. Fitzpatrick, Mr. Mulvey, and they were gonna look into it. And they never got back to us, like, what are we supposed to do?
Did you follow up with them when you didn't hear back?
Yeah, we said, "This is the situation. What are we gonna do? You're the, you're the, you're on this board, you're on that board. Tell us what to do."
And then I believe after, after Mr. Mulvey and Mr. Fitzpatrick, um, where, when he, is when the legal, our legal department said, you know, "We, we need to look at this."
But you do understand, you, you've issued licenses.
Yeah.
You have a history of doing it.
Yeah.
Somebody didn't even pay the fee or fill out the applications that's necessary and you guys signed the licenses at the meeting. We watched all the minutes.
No, no, we have, we have signed, we have signed
You have signed it and they'll get it if they deliver.
Provisional that everything is in order.
Right, exactly.
When the paperwork is done, yes.
I understand. How, the pizza tavern, that wasn't straightened out yet. And they were giving it without it being straightened out. They were giving their license without it being straightened out.
The liquor license, or the question of whether it was there or not there, or
And we feel like we're not being treated to.
Everything is in order before we sign it.
Because there were like proof?
No, that, that is not true, cause it was
It's proof.
It just got resolved apparently that it wasn't
So what are you saying? You're saying the board signed something that wasn't resolved?
It was like
Because it's like proof.
Is that what you're saying?
Because it was proof.
I find that hard to believe.
Because when someone says, "Prove it," like to us, you know, it, it came down to, from our research, talking to everybody, like continuing to this day, you, if you tell, go to zoning, we can't go to zoning. Because according to the bylaw, what we are are pre-existing non-conforming. There's no avenue to go to them, or go to planning. According to it, there is no avenue to go to them because we're pre-existing non-conforming. And so they say, "Well, can you approve it?" "Well, yeah, well, the records were better, we, we could." But, okay, here's ninety-two. That gives us twenty-two years in business. You know, a, a, add, a, a article in the Wintzaki Call that meant, then there was like twelve Class Two licenses. And it's like, well, there's twenty-two years. And now we're doing microfilm at the Wintzaki Call, you know? It, it takes an hour to go through a, a month, you know? And it's like trying to see if the Wintzaki Call printed articles about it, you know? And it's like, it's, it's just frustrating because we did, we feel that, we, we feel that we did what was asked of us. To, and they recommended in January, December, to give them a ninety day. They recommended that. Because why should Mark's Garage be held up? They know that we talked to them. They know that we were trying to resolve it with them. And we have it on in the minutes that they said, "We recommend ninety days." Yeah, she has it in the minutes, if you need to see it, you can find it. They said, "Well, give them ninety days." Cause we don't know what's going on. Every, every time we talk to them, there's no avenue to go to them. There's no avenue, because you're pre-existing, pre-existing non-conforming. So at this point, even in the worst of scenarios, let's just say, I'm trying to think, I'm saying, what possibly could happen for me to be in this? Somebody did something illegal. Somewhere along the line, Joe Sherrick got a, a Class Two license after seventy-seven. Somebody did something illegal. Some board, your peers
If he received one after nineteen seventy-seven.
That we don't know, but that would have to be the perception that your, your, the members before you, someone did something illegal. You know? That would have to be what it is.
It's not that they, it's not that they did it illegal. It's, you have to look back into, and, and I talked about this last time you were here. Um, the way in the town was run in nineteen seventy-seven, um, we didn't have our, we didn't have a, an executive secretary. We had a very nice woman who worked there, took notes and the selectmen, um, you know, came to the, the three selectmen at the time, came down and, and had their meetings and did what they felt was best. Did they, did we have the internet to know all the laws? There's old law books, they're still, probably still upstairs, that they had to look through, they had to call the state. The manpower, the resources in nineteen seventy-seven, and I'm trying to think when our executive secretary was first hired, ninety-one, maybe, eighty, late eighties, really? Late eighties, um, um, Mark Cohen?
Right, Mark.
When he came aboard, I think it was late eighty, late eighties. So you gotta figure, like, some things might have been done that, not that they were doing it illegally, they were doing it to the best of their knowledge and, and for the good of the community. So, it's, and now we're in a different, we're in a different era now. We've got information, we've got laws, we've got things that we have to follow that. And, and unfortunate, that's what this board is tied to. Is making sure that we're doing things the proper way. And, and from here on out, that we do that. So, that's where we When you say that, I mean, not to be a certain way, but Zeno's up the street. Auto repair is not acceptable in alpine areas. So not to bring up a business, but how does he have, he doesn't have a license
We had a hearing on him.
but he's a repair shop. He should not be
He had, he had a hearing and his neighbors came.
We had to have a public hearing for him.
We had, we did.
It says, "No."
It, yeah, it says, "It's not even a problem."
In the bylaw, it says, "No, don't even ask." You can't even ask. In the bylaw, it says no, don't even ask. You can't even ask. It's against the bylaw to even ask.
But Smitty's, Smitty's auto and radiator was existing as proof before nineteen seventy-seven. While he never, he, he never lapsed his license though.
No, it was sold to Trees to Keys. They operated out of there and then I think it went to.
Yeah, there was always a business there.
There was always a business there.
There's always a business there.
And then there's proof that Joe Sherrick existed as the repair shop before seventy-seven. It's, it's the class-two part. That's the, this, this is the information we get from the planning and zoning. That's the issue.
It's like, the, the town has zero records. How you, you don't even, we all know that Joe Sherrick was there. Well, what do you really have except what you got from Osp that there was a repair place?
Well, ninety, ninety-two, that call, that I had in the Wintzaki Call makes it twenty-two years.
Right.
So I'm just saying, even if, even if you said, even in the worst imaginable scenario and someone said, you know what? You have the legal right. To close him down. It goes before a judge, the jury, the president, you can do it. But if my, if Mark's Garage did nothing wrong. It would still say, well, give him ninety days. Give him, he would have to be given, I mean, I, who, who would, even if there's something wrong with your house, there was a. We found a type, a mistake on the title of your house, you gotta get out tomorrow. Well, wait a minute, I can't get out tomorrow. That doesn't make any sense. Can't imagine someone telling you, you gotta get out of your house.
They do it. They do it. If they're committing your water's bad and whatever.
Oh, no, I'm just saying the title. The problem with your title.
No, but if there's something wrong.
It's a whole different scenario what you're talking about. You're going off track.
You, you would expect to be, to be dealt with in a reasonable way because you can't just say, you're done. Today you're done.
I think what we're trying to tell you is this.
That doesn't make sense.
We have steps, Jennifer said, certain protocol that we must abide by. We have certain ways we have to do it. If there was a red flag or something like that, or executive secretary's waiting for one piece of paper before we can move forward. We can't do anything about it until all the steps and all the avenues have been filled and all the spaces are, and I believe that's where we are right now.
Right, and I, I just want to remind Mr. Fernandez that his license for the entire calendar year for two thousand thirteen was provisional. This board gave you an entire year.
Yeah.
So now you're, so what you're asking for was an additional ninety days.
I'm, I'm not asking.
All right, and we cannot.
I'm there. Mark's Garage is there.
We cannot do that at this time because we're still waiting, this board, for certain paperwork before we can move forward. And that's where the other boards, as soon as Helen gets certain stuff, then we can move forward.
Can I just make a, a, a weird point? You asked me to do something and I had, whatever was ever asked, we did. Right? We did it. Unless, if someone can say, I didn't do it, you know, well, you didn't do enough, you didn't talk enough, you didn't. But where, where was the town, right? This whole year, where were they? Where were they doing due diligence? So that I'm not sitting here without a license because I did my part. And if someone can tell me I didn't, I'd like to know what I didn't do. Because I did it.
Maybe it had nothing to do with what you did and what you didn't do. Maybe it's because they're looking for certain paperwork.
Right.
They're filling the blanks.
That whole year, the whole, that's what I'm trying to say, that whole, this whole past year that went by.
You also might have been dealing with people who weren't following up. So if, if we didn't want you to have it, we could vote tonight and say no. Well, technically not, but you know, we could hold a hearing and say, no, we're, or we're not doing it. But this board has invested our time of our executive secretary, the energy and money of our legal counsel to research, to go back, to look. I mean, we're not just saying, oh, we're not giving it to you. We, how many hours has the lawyers been working on this? I know at least two or three conversations that have come back to us and what they're saying. Our town planner has invested his time. We, we received lengthy information from him, um, you know. So it's not that we're not doing anything. You might not see us doing anything, but we, we've got our legal counsel on this. We've got our town planner on this. We're trying to fix it. What people did before this board that you had talked to, we can't, we don't know that. Like what you're telling me tonight is the first time I heard that you were working with Mike or with Mr. Malby. Um, that's, you know, that's kind of my thing. But, but my thing is, is we, we issued the license and we signed the license. That, you know, if we had known six months earlier, we would have started on it six months earlier. But we didn't know that, that you were reaching out to other people. To us, it looked like he's not doing anything. It was getting close to the end of the year and now he's trying to get it in.
I wasn't doing anything. That was my concern.
We wouldn't know that because, and just like you don't know what we're doing to get this resolved. We didn't know what you were doing from January to September-ish. Do you know what I mean? It looked like, oh, the, the license is ending and now they're trying to fix it and not everything is.
I hope you feel better. I feel real sure that we didn't just say, we're not doing nothing. Because we did reach out to these ones. And you, if you sense a little bit of frustration other than, you know, I can't move anything, sell anything. Because when you have a class-two license, it's a special license you get, insurance, it's called a garage keeper's. And it, what it does is it ensures your property, your cars, and I don't have no insurance. I have no protection at my garage for anything because that is only issued if you have a class-two license. So that's where a little of the frustration comes in, other than, and I, and I had the feeling that you didn't really know that we did reach out to these ones and we did, and we're thinking, well, if you've got someone, you say, this is the issue, this is what we're gonna get. And they go, okay, I'm gonna research it. All right, guess it's okay.
Well, now you know where we stand right now in this board and our executive secretary. And it's not that we're not moving forward, we're doing what we can do, but there's certain, there's certain things that we don't have to make this board move forward for you.
We, later on, you know.
No, I mean, I understand. I'm just saying, you have your two poles, businesses, twenty-four seven. If you took your business away, how would you feel? That's how we feel right now.
Right, and right now the town council called us a little bit before the meeting. And so we have to take a, make a motion to allow him to speak with the planner. It's just another policy that we have to, we have to vote for anybody to speak with the lawyers.
I feel, I feel comfortable.
And, uh, so he's working to, to deal with it and make it so that it, it's all done legal. So there can be no backlash on, on you guys, on us, you know.
I feel, I feel comfortable. You know, I have respect for everyone here in this room. That's the way I was, I was brought up. That's the way you have to be. And, you know, in the same sense, you know, when you, when you deal with people, you get, yes, mean yes, you're no, mean no, no. And, you know, you feel you're being, I was always upfront with people and it's like, and it comes back and it's like, and that's why I thought, I don't think they know. I don't think they know that we've been on this all year. You know, it's almost like, hey, they didn't do nothing. It's like, no.
I don't think that we're not doing anything. We just have to make sure that we're doing it correctly.
Thank you.
So that nothing comes back twenty years for your son. Okay?
Exactly, exactly.
So think of it that way. Like this is, you know, and I know it's hard and I, I don't even, I mean, I realize your business and everything like that. But we also have to make sure that we're doing the right thing. And nobody, I, I can personally say that I'm not out to take away your business.
Thank you.
That is not my intent. My intent is to do it correctly.
If you listen to the planning board, they're trying to figure out a way to allow businesses to come here. But they, we have to change a whole boatload of bylaws and do it. And that's what their master plan is. So that's our plan is to make stuff like this a lot easier and still keep the bedroom community atmosphere. But, but make it easier for business to come in to, and, you know, we're not gonna hide.
So they can do something, right?
In the end, it's to help us with our revenue.
Right.
Because we need it, like everyone.
We're not gonna chase you out of here and then chase your revenue out of here. And that's not our concept. This board, this board is here for the best interest of the people.
You win, we win.
Okay, so this board will do their best they can to move forward on it. But like Jennifer said, Mike Rowland said, there's certain steps and certain procedures that we have to follow and we have to wait for them.
Is it, the plan?
I feel, I feel good.
I know it's hiring, I know it's not because you're looking for, but.
No, I mean, I think there's just unanswered things. And when I, when I walked away and I looked at the minutes and I'm thinking, they don't really know. They don't really know. This is a new board. You only know what you hear. And if, if I come in and I fill in some blanks, oh, I didn't know that, or I didn't know this, or, or you tell me, well, it's this way and it's that way, I don't know. And, you know, I feel comfortable, you know, about the situation and, like I said, like last time I was here, it does have to do with Millville. You know, because I know there's a lot of businesses, I've done business with the welding shop on, on Hill Street. I've done business with him. You know, I'm thankful he's there. You know, I need something heavy-duty welded, but a great thing that is. Or if I'm thirsty, I can go down the street to the store, you know? We appreciate that. Ordering a pizza. It's like, man, when you're working, who wants to go all the way up to Uxbridge or to get a pizza or get something to drink? We need to, we need businesses.
And then you, you, that email that you sent me this week with your thoughts and concerns. I forwarded that to legal counsel so that they can basically hear you. You know, not just see, you know, bylaws and laws and having the word Mark's Garage. And I wanted them to be able to actually hear you. You know, so I gave that to them. You know, I mean, I forwarded it to Helen and she sent it off to, to the legals so that they, they know. You know, everything that we're getting, we're giving to them.
And the whole board was apprised of that. And the whole board was apprised.
Right, there was, everybody was CC'd on that email. So we all.
That was my concern. You know, so we're all on the same page, you know? I didn't wanna, because that's what I felt. I felt like maybe, because what I was going through, dealing with this and nobody knows. And that, it's like, what? Nobody knows? People need to start knowing things, you know?
As soon as I, I opened it, I read it, and then I sent it to Helen right away and, and the rest of the board got it. And, and then our lawyers got it immediately as well.
Thank you. And you know, in, in the future, I mean, gee, if there's ever a complaint, I mean, I try to keep it low-key up there because that's what everyone always seems to want. I'd love to put an addition, pave it and put streamers and lights. And they said, well, that's probably not the best thing, you know? If that ever changes and the board or town thinks it's good. We weren't happy to spend more money up there and, and put an addition and, and be able to do more up there. But it's always been like, hey, take it easy up there.
We're gonna get over this speed bump.
Yeah, I know, but you know, any complaints, you know, anybody calls me, you know, and has a complaint, I've always, you know, I'm, I'm willing to do it. If you need help with anything, you know, I've always been the guy, call me if you need help with anything, you know? But thank you for your time. I appreciate it. I know you guys, you know, you have other family and things and, and, you know, it's a sacrifice. It really is. And I, I understand it and I appreciate your time. Thank you. My lawyer, my lawyer.
She can go home and watch herself later.
She was a guy, I don't see me. Thank you.
Thank you.
One, one of the correspondents is, um, from Margaret Carroll, uh, in the Historical Commission. So they'd like to meet with us, um, in the future. I spoke with her yesterday and Helen also did. I mean, we're just so busy right now with the budget and town meeting and all that coming up. So we told her that we're not, we will get her on an agenda as soon as the load gets a little lighter, but.
Okay, I, I didn't speak with her. I did reply to the letter via email, but I haven't spoken with her at all.
So, so she knows that we're not forgetting about them. It's just we're so busy right now. And she, she was good with that, yeah. So, um, I think after town meeting, we can get them on a historical one.
Well, I do know that when we moved over here in ninety-two, that the historical, and my tenure on the board, you know, late nineties. Was that they managed the historical pieces. So it's probably one of those things that was policy and, and, and whatever. Um, over the years and with new people and rotation of staff and new individuals, that that may have just, you know, been overlooked. But just, it wasn't, it wasn't a thought because it wasn't a, because there hasn't been a lot done in that here, um.
I, I, I know some historical pictures fell.
I don't think there was any malice.
And Helen, yeah, Helen sent the pictures out, had the frames repaired.
I think it's just clearing the air. I think it's just clearing the air.
Yeah, so we're gonna straighten it out and, and, you know, we do apologize if we, if we stepped out of bounds, but, um. I will thank Helen for repairing the pictures that did break, but, um, they are, you know, repaired so that the, the actual pictures inside the frames are protected, so. And, um, we'll, we'll talk to them, get all their concerns.
Can we just make mention of the correspondence for the parade because it is a change in time?
Yep, yeah, that's gonna be at eleven AM this year. Um, they'll be shutting down Providence Street approximately ten AM and then all the usual shut, shutdowns all the way down once the parade starts. Uh, but everything's two hours earlier this year.
Do we know if there's something on cable for that or?
I don't know if they posted it.
I'm, it just.
Should be.
Yeah, I know a lot of people, as you walk down the road, you see that there's barbecues and cookouts and family things going on, um, so.
I think.
Maybe just.
This is kind of lengthy. If they could shorten it up a little bit so that it's easy to read on, on, on the cable access.
Just so it's, so people know that there's a change in time.
Yep. And, uh. That's it for the parade. And then of course, everybody, you know, any groups or organizations that wish to, um, participate in the parade, in the parade. Uh, whether they want to enter a float or just march, uh, you can email the Millville Parade Committee at millvileparade@charter.com. I'm, I'm sorry, that's their, and then their, I'm sorry, their email is millvileparade@charter.net is the email. And the website is millvileparade@charter.com. So, um, and they'll be happy to accommodate, uh, any, you know, anybody that would like to participate. Or just volunteer to help. Uh, and that's it for the parade. And we, everybody got their letter from Lisa. Which is everything we went over last week with the, with the school committee. Awful lot of money. And that's all I really have for correspondence. Next, we have some appointments and resid, well, actually, yeah, appointments and one resignation. Uh, we have council on aging for, um, the term through June thirtieth of two thousand sixteen. And Robert LaFlem is, is wishing to be, um, an alternate member. So, um, looking for a motion to appoint Rob, Robert LaFlem as an alternate member of the council on aging effective immediately for a period ending June thirty, two, two thousand sixteen.
Motion to appoint Robert LaFlem as an alternate member of the council on aging effective immediately for a period, um, ending June thirtieth, two thousand sixteen.
Can I second that? All in favor? Okay, thank you, Mr. LaFlem. Uh, next, we have Memorial Day Parade Committee. We have three individuals wishing to, um, be appointed to that. And that runs through June thirtieth, two thousand fourteen. Uh, we have Linda Basset of forty-seven Prospect Street, Loriann Legear of forty-seven Prospect Street, and Lois Salomi fifty-seven, uh, fifty-six A Hope Street.
And Mr. Chairman, just to point out, um, part of your motion, or it could be a separate motion, would also be to increase the membership to a nine-member committee. It's currently a five-member.
Yeah, and we also wanna, that's, that's great because we had two members. Now we need to extend it to nine. That's awesome. So, um, so add that nine member to the motion.
Okay. Well, you're right. Motion to increase the, the membership of the Memorial Day Parade Committee to nine. And, and appoint, um, not, uh, appoint Linda Basset, Loriann Legear, and Lois Salomi.
I'll second that. Second that. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And thank you very much for, uh, joining the Memorial Day Committee.
Uh, next, Mr. Bobbin obviously did put his letter of.
Yes, he did.
So, uh. We have veterans' agent and, uh, so we're looking for an appointment through May first, two thousand fourteen. Through April thirtieth, two thousand fifteen.
Looking for a motion?
Motion for that.
Uh, that is for to, all right, I'll make a motion to have Lincoln Barber to continue doing veterans' aid from the, from the date that you.
Date is, uh, May first, two thousand fourteen through April thirtieth, two thousand fifteen.
Okay, that was right. There's just, uh, one point that I have on the motion is that, uh, and Mr. Barber did bring it up, but, uh, a year ago, we, uh, not a year ago, at some point in, in not too recent past, uh, the Veterans Regional Director.
Right, from Northbridge.
From Northbridge, uh, visited and, uh, is, uh, and I was just, I want to question, you know, if we're going forward. Should we ever consider, uh, regionalizing? But Mr. Barber addressed that in terms of cost, but we might want to speak with the recommendation from Mr. Kettrell. But I, I, I really don't have a, a problem seconding Mr. Lawrence's, uh, motion.
See, the, a lot of the problem with, with, when we regionalize with certain departments is other towns have such a large, uh, budget. And even if we were ten percent of that extremely large budget, it is most likely gonna be way above our budget that we have now.
The salary, the salary is gonna be much more than what we're paying in the office.
A lot of veterans' agents actually get paid hours, gets zero, I think we should leave that. You know, that's, that's a prior. And going to the CMR PC meetings, and that's one thing that they try to make sure we understand is regionalizing is good and, uh, it's, it's very good. But at the same time, like I just explained, sometimes it can be, have a negative effect on the smaller community.
Yeah, it's also the, the issue we've had with the animal control department. It would be more costly for us.
And that was gonna be an issue had we regionalized our library ten years ago when Blackstone built that new one. Beautiful structure and, you know, great library, but we, our budget, it doesn't even come close to what our percentage of their, of their operating budget, you know?
Is a motion in the second?
Yep. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
I know you mentioned you had a resignation. I don't have any on the agenda, the one that we did receive.
Email we did get.
Yeah, it wasn't, it didn't make it on the agenda, so it would be on for the next one.
All right.
Um, can we just maybe via phone call or email to Mr. Cmenta? And let him know, thank you for offering, but right now our current veteran agent is serving us well and we'll keep him in mind in the future.
Yep.
Because I knew Dennis would do a marvelous job. I mean, he's, he's great.
No, he, he didn't know if Lincoln was gonna resign or, because he knows how Lincoln gets frustrated at the same time.
And well, I mean, also too, I mean, Lincoln's using his own truck to pick up a wheelchairs, driving people to appointments. You know, I mean, those are things that probably would have been taken care of if we had our senior van, um, agreement still. That's nothing against our council, that's against our neighboring community. Um, but you know, I mean, Lincoln's going above and beyond doing the things that he, you know.
And it's working, so I'd like to believe it.
Yeah.
Um. And that's it for appointments. All right, so Helen, your turn.
Uh, just update the board on a few things. Um, I received a visit from Mike Peterson of National Grid regarding the Interstate Reliability Project. Uh, he indicated they expect approval, to receive approval from the state to push forward on that project within the month. Um, as soon as they get that approval, they're gonna be, um, working immediately with the tree trimming, um, along that stretch of, um, the lines. Um, and they'll be doing some brush removal. He said the, there will be officials out marking the wetlands and the abutters will be notified. They do plan on holding another, um, session for the abutters, uh, up on the, at the Quaker Highway. The motel there has a conference room. The poles themselves are expected to go up in August and September.
Okay.
So, um, and my understanding from him is he also did meet, meet with Chief Landry to bring. So, um, and my understanding from him is he also did meet, meet with Chief Landry to bring him aware of that. Um, if anybody has any questions, um, he did provide me with his telephone number, I don't, I don't really wanna read it on, um, television, but if anybody wants to give me a call, I'd be happy to speak with them and relay his contact information.
Okay.
Do they, oh, I'm sorry, they took names and emails when we had that one here, 'cause we had quite a few residents come.
Yeah.
Um, are they keeping, 'cause they said that they have a, remember they said they have a bank of emails and they're emailing? Do you, are they, are they doing that, are they?
He did say they were, yeah, he said they are emailing, um, they're providing status reports, and as soon as they get the approval, they will start sending them out again. I don't know that there's been any done recently, but as soon as they get this approval-
Could we ask to be carbon copied?
We will be, yeah, he, he has mine, um, and he also asked me for the building inspectors, um, so they do have all that information. Uh, there is a website, it's interstatereliabilityproject.com, all in one word, for all, most cases. Um, we've received over the past year at least, many, many complaints about the postal service. Now, obviously, the post offices, this, the federal government has nothing to do with the town, um, but it finally got to the point where the, the town hall itself was having some significant issues with the service-
Yep, we were.
-with respect to pickup and delivery. Um, so I did send a letter off to the Regional Director in Washington. I did receive a, a very nice, uh, phone call last week, I had a lengthy telephone call with him. Um, his name is Barry Begley, he's the Senior Manager, and also a gentleman by the name of Sean Pitts, he's the Operational Manager. They're both out of the Boston Regional Office. Um, they provided me with their direct telephone numbers. They were going to address all of the situations that we discussed, um, and they asked that if any residents or any town officials have any issues, call it into us, um, Christina is gonna keep a log, and then we're gonna follow up with these gentlemen on a regular basis.
Okay.
And, um, ironically, um, he actually called me back today to follow up, you know, about a week later, so. They took it very seriously, they were very appreciative of the letter, um, and also hopefully, any residents watching, hopefully things will improve with your delivery.
Very good.
Uh, we received information that all of our bylaws now have been approved by the Attorney General's Office, all that had been submitted. Um, the official books are expected by the end of April, they were actually package, packaging them today when she emailed me. Um, my plan, if the board, um, agrees with it, is to have about a hundred copies available, free of charge, to the townspeople at town meeting, that we'll just copy in-house, because the townspeople have had to wait so long for these updated, um, bylaws.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and we'll keep them available, um, until they run out here at the town hall, but then effective July first, the fee would go into effect, I believe it's either ten dollars, or it might, might've gone up to fifteen dollars to get a copy of the manual, but um, as a courtesy to the townspeople who have been patient, if the board is okay with that, I'd like to have, you know, maybe a hundred, hundred and twenty-five copies available.
Do, do we have a, um, a digital copy, is it PDF?
There will be a digital copy on our, um, town website that you can read or print from home, absolutely, yep.
Hundred copies, huh?
That's what I'm thinking, a hundred copies.
It's, it's not that much paper.
Are we doing that in-house?
Yeah, we would just do it right in-house.
We probably won't get a hundred people at the town meeting. Do you have the stuff to buy and whatever, you know?
Yeah, it's just, it, it's not, it's not that thick of a packet, it'll just be double-sided, it might take a ream or two of paper, and we'll just staple that.
That's fine.
Yeah.
Yeah, nothing fancy, but just something that they have.
Okay.
That they're updating.
Okay with that?
Yep.
Keep it in, Helen.
And, uh, the last thing, I've, um, been in touch with Bob Ferrari of Northeast Water, I've been forwarding to you all the, uh, the emails, everything is on track, the water system's looking great. Uh, all the tests, results were either below acceptable limits, or they were non-detect, uh, for any of the chemicals. Um, he asked if he could be on the board's next agenda, he was hoping to be able to come in for your meeting this week, but he didn't realize it was gonna be on Tuesday instead of Monday, and he had something, uh, planned tonight, but he will be in for your next meeting to give you a status update, uh, but he wanted me to relay that everything is, is going good.
Is it good?
That'll be on a Tuesday too, but he is available on that Tuesday, so, and that's it, that's all I have.
Is he good on DEP as well, I mean?
He is working with DEP, um, he's right now going through the paperwork to get us back on the, the water, the boat of water, so.
It's all good.
Everything's good, yep.
That's great. So, sounds like we made a good decision.
Yeah.
All right, next, old business, we have Mark's Garage. Okay, so, um, Gary Brackett, uh, would like to speak with Joe Laden. So, I need a motion from the board to have Town Council speak with Town Planner Joe Laden for clarification about issues at Mark's Garage.
So, move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, this is for John, animal control vehicle. John spent a few days, few hours, uh, and got us a pretty, pretty good deal on our, on our animal control vehicle.
What I, what I did, um, this time is, since we had a poor, uh, response, I went up to one of the car dealers and asked them about a vehicle, but I was thinking it as a different way, as a multitask vehicle, like, for instance, I was thinking, for instance, Centadium. They may need a vehicle to get supplies, tables, chairs, set up different things and this and that, besides being a animal control vehicle. So, I went to the General Manager and explained to him the, uh, what we needed, and what we had to stay by with the emissions, the gas, and I needed some car facts, but I also needed a full inspection of a vehicle that would fit our criteria, and he had one, you know, the Ford Ranger. And I looked at it, the thing is absolutely mint, there isn't a scratch on it, it must've been garaged, and, but, I still wanted to go over the vehicle, so we put it on the lift, and if you look at your slip, you'll see in the back that there was some things that needed to be looked at, and repaired. Keep in mind, I'm trying to keep it under eight thousand dollars. So, with that said, I have a list here of some of the deficiencies that, um, did need to be, that the, if the town was going to accept this, I would want all this stuff fixed, so the car, I should say, the truck, when put plates on it, it's done, it, we don't have to send it out, get it repaired, we don't have to do nothing. So, between the oil filter, the, the air filter, the wipers, the fuel filters, the lower ball joints, we put it up on the rack, and it had a certified mechanic there, and this is all the stuff, and that rear axle seals, the rear drums, we didn't like them, so we're gonna cut them, put brand-new brakes on them, and that was about it, but I says to him, I really didn't like the tires, they were passable, but I need a vehicle that we don't have to go back next year and go for four, five hundred dollars on the tires, I need something that is gonna last and even, you know, best for the community. So, he says, we'll put four brand-new tires on it, no extra charge. I says, okay, and I'm like, I says, all right, I said, but there's one other thing, I gotta make sure everything is guaranteed. So, he put a twelve-months, um, powertrain warranty, front to back, um, on top of that, and I says to him, well, there's one other thing. The back of the truck does not have a cap, all right, and for the dog officer to put his animals in a cage and this and that, I says, you can't have it out in the open with the elements and this and that, and plus, I was thinking if, if we're gonna make it a multitask vehicle, I gotta make sure that the stuff inside there doesn't get wet, and everything stays dry. So, he turned around and he called the cap place, and said, I'll tell you what I'll do, I'll buy a brand-new cap, I'll put it on the back, no extra charge. So, basically, what we're getting is we're getting a vehicle that if we go up there with a license plate, you're gonna, you'll inspect it, no extra charge, and it's under eight thousand dollars. Everything done, a hundred percent. And the vehicle has sixty-four thousand miles on it, um, sixty-four and change, and, uh, I, I think we're really getting, from what I see, and for, and I drove it, um, it's quite a really nice vehicle, and I, I think it'd be for the best interest of this board to consider this vehicle. Um, like I said, it's automatic, power steering, power brakes, air conditioning, there isn't a scratch, it's like brand-new, it is, I couldn't believe the condition of this vehicle. It does have some issues, but they're all gonna get fixed, and he's not charging us a dime more, with a brand-new cap. So, that's what falls to the, to the, uh, board on this vehicle. The only other thing I have to tell the board is we have to vote on it tonight, or he's not gonna hold, he's been holding it for ten days. That's the only thing.
And the ACO, um, has looked at it, I mean, uh-
Talked to him already?
Yeah, talked to him.
Went through, went through everything. The only thing I wanted to ask the board, and this is over and beyond what we're gonna do, instead of lettering it, what I'd like to do is put lettering on a magnet, like dog catcher thing, so we put it on the side of the doors, and when we're not using the truck as animal control, or if they wanna use it for something else, maybe we just take them off, so, I mean, it's only a thought, going down the road.
At the time of this memo, I hadn't had the opportunity to speak with the animal control officer, since that time, he has emailed me. Um, he would prefer the Chevrolet Uplander or something similar, he wasn't too keen on a pickup truck. That's just his opinion.
He's gonna get what we give him for seven grand.
Well, eight, yeah.
Eight grand, I mean.
Yep, and I just, you know, I just cautioned the board, there was some concern on my end as Chief Procurement Officer about the way this was procured. It, it took a lot of contemplation in being able to tell you that you can do this legally, 'cause I was really on the fence about it. But if you can provide factual evidence based on these two proposals, that one is actually a better deal than the other, then I have no problem with you voting for it. My concern, and I'm not familiar with vehicles whatsoever, as, as Mrs. Wing has stated in the past, a vehicle that's four years newer and has half the mileage, I question, may that be a better deal for the town, even though it is two thousand dollars more? That's, that's the way I'm looking at it here, it'll last, you know, longer for the town, it's preferred for the animal control officer, um, so, and that's just what I'm throwing out there, but if you, is, is-
That's the one that needs, that's the one that needs brakes, ties, and all kinds of stuff.
Right, but they were gonna fix all that for the ten thousand, so. So, it's, it's completely up to you, I just caution you that you do have to be able to have the factual evidence that it is a better deal for the town, and if you can do that, then that's fine.
I don't know how a minivan can be better than a pickup truck. That's all an Uplander is.
What, what was the engine, uh, on the, uh?
Pickup?
Uplander.
I think that was a six-cylinder.
Six-cylinder, three-point-nine.
Three-point-nine.
Three-point-nine engine, a little bit bigger.
It's also a heavier vehicle, John. In the pickup.
And Helen, you were concerned? What, um, because, 'cause the price obviously is lower.
Right, there's no RFP out for this particular vehicle.
Okay.
So, technically, we only have, we, we're supposed to get three estimates, um, and we only had the one, but fortunately, because it is under ten thousand, what the procurement laws do state is that we can use sound business practices. But generally, you would want three estimates for close to or similar items. Um, so, you know, and, and additionally, to cover that, what I did do is I went online and I printed out, um, estimates for two thousand four Ford Rangers, so we can compare, and it does seem to be, based on mileage and based on, um, the year, that does actually seem to be the better deal, you know, versus the ones that I printed out here. So, that, so that's not the question, the question is, based on the other proposal we received. In my mind, you just want to avoid a legal issue with Oxburjado coming back, saying what was wrong with my, what was wrong with my offer, it was within your bid specs, it was under budget. How, can you prove to me how the Ford Ranger is better than the offer I gave you?
Why do we have to-
And as long as you can answer that, then-
Why do we have to justify ourselves to him?
Because he has a legal right.
Because he was legally posted.
Well, because it's probably the place, yes, well, and we can multi, multi-use a pickup truck.
Well, I, I wouldn't wanna hang our hat on that any department can use it. Any department can use the highway truck, departments have in the past, as long as they meet the requirements of the insurance and the town employees and, and things of that sort. No, I know, but I just, I don't think, I mean, that's not our selling point on it. My, my thing is, is when I first started looking at this, I'm like, what is going on? Um, I was reading it online, so it was, um, it was a little different for me, but the cab piece, I'm, I'm not thrilled about the age, the, the mileage, but when you look at what you are getting, you're getting eighteen hundred dollars in the repairs, that probably would've gone unnoticed, maybe? Or unrecognized, or a quick fix like the Uplander was getting. Um, the cab to make it, um, enclosed, um, having that on, also the documentation, the fees, documentation fee and inspection is included in that, so when you take that fee, you take the, um, the repairs, because Oxburjado, um, declined to, to do many repairs or lower the price. Um, you know, when it says repair versus replace, I had a problem with that verbiage, that, that verbiage when they came back to us, you know, I said, this repair, you know, piece of duct tape, or why aren't we getting new hoses? So, I was, I was concerned about that. I think as far as, um, the ACO concern about being a pickup versus an Uplander, I think, um, across the, like a crossover, it, it's really what you get accustomed to, you know? It's new, but eventually, you accustom, you, you get used to it.
Yep.
And it's a change, and, and change isn't always bad, it's just different, so, um, I, I'm not crazy about the year and the mileage, but it's not horrible for what it's going to be used for over duration and well-cared-for, based on the repairs being done, the incentives of the cab and those things coming in. Um, I think that it's, um, I think it's a wise choice. I just wanna be sure, um, that we are, you know, okay legally in doing so, so. That's just my opinion on what I read and what I saw.
Probably get, uh, eight or so years, good years of property being obtained on, on, on the-
Like I said, when I went over this thing, I made sure that everything was covered, like, like I said, the tires were iffy, we're getting four brand-new tires, by the way, the battery's brand-new, and the whole thing has been clean, engine's been cleaned, I mean, this, this-
We have twelve months and twelve thousand miles versus the six, the six-
That's another thing he gave.
So, it's double as far as warranty, so that was, that kinda-
And I tried to cover everything, like I said, it's like Jennifer's, I, you know, I wanted to make sure that the thing had a cap in the back, and it wasn't open, this and that, and I understand what Jennifer's also said about, we can use other vehicles, but it was just another, another entity I was thinking about, that's all.
It is low-mile service, I mean, yes, it is.
It's not being used.
And everything in this thing is done, I mean, the oil's changed, the fuel, everything has gone through, and all the filters have changed, so you're basically starting scratch. So, if it needs an oil change, it's because you put on three thousand miles or whatever is recommended by whoever takes care of it. That's what I came up with. And it gets good gas mileage, so. That's what I got.
Everyone's looking at me for motions.
No, I just, I just wanna know what Jennifer's-
What?
Are you okay with this or not, or?
Yeah, I just, I just wanna make sure that we're, we're okay in our reasoning, you know, based on the, the items that are coming in, on the value of it, is, is all.
Would you like to look at the, um, the other similars? The same year and, and type of vehicle?
We're under the ten thousand dollar mark for sound business practices.
We're under the $10,000 mark for sound business practices.
They were on, they were on the bid list.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, but that makes no difference.
They didn't, they didn't bid the vehicle that was on there.
There, I, I was hoping they were on the, the state bid list, what's called compi now.
Yeah.
Um, because I know Imperial is on there, but they're not on there for used vehicles, they're only on there for new. If they were on the state bid list for used, then there would be no question, we'd already be authorized to use them, they'd be an authorized vendor. Um, and that is the case, for instances, such as when the chief gets his, his police cruisers. He uses a vendor that is on compis, so he doesn't have to go up to bid. But unfortunately, Imperial isn't on there for used, so you have to make sure, um, that you, you're following the procurement laws, otherwise, somebody could come back and complain.
And under 10, we're good?
I'm sorry?
Under 10 grand, we're good?
Yes.
So, okay.
Yeah, if I wasn't, if I wasn't comfortable, I wouldn't even have presented this to you. And I did, um, run it by somebody who is, um, certified in their MCPPO, the procurement. And they, you know, they were initially on the fence too, but I think we were able to convince each other that it was okay, so...
Okay. Motion to purchase 2004, 2004 Ford Ranger pickup from Imperial Ford. Million, with a sum of, with a sum of $8,000.
Uh, $7,988.
$7,988.
Now, just keep in mind, one thing, it's gonna take them like 10 days to get the cap, because it's brand-new, okay?
It's gonna take us that long to get a check anyway?
I, I would come up with that in the...
Um, the finance has to sign the reserve fund tomorrow night, and then we can...
Call.
Well, I could, I mean, I think you could call them and just say that the board has voted and approved it, we're waiting...
Right, but until finance signs the reserve fund, it's, financially, it's not authorized.
Right, but you could say that the, this board has made a motion, we're waiting for the paperwork to be signed, just so it does one-off the law.
They're holding them on good faith, just so...
Yep.
I second the motion.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have for new business, we have the town hall building committee. We have five appointments.
And number five on your memo isn't filled in, that is actually going to be Jerry Finn. It wasn't filled in, because I hadn't received his response at the time of, that I wrote this.
Yeah, he called me and told me, I knew he was very interested.
Okay, so, uh, looking for a motion to create a committee known as the Municipal Senate Building Committee, to, to be composed of one member of the Board of Selectmen, one member of Finance Committee, one member of the Capital Planning, Executive Secretary of this town during his or her term office, additional member who is a resident of Millville, and one alternate member who is also a resident of Millville. The five members shall be appointed by the Board of Selectmen for the purpose of reviewing and considering proposals received for an existing condition study and report of the Longfellow Municipal Senate, and further, based on the result of said report, recommend to the Board of Selectmen the, the best course of action for the building. The committee shall provide a written report to the Board of Selectmen for, for inclusion in the town's annual report for the years in which the committee is active. That's the motion, so just...
Sub move to read. Do you need a motion for the appointment?
Yes.
So, all right, so that's the motion for the committee. All in favor?
Aye.
Now, for the Municipal Senate Building Committee, we have five, uh, individuals. One from the Selectmen will be John Lara, uh, Helen Coffin, Executive Secretary, Rich Crivello from the Finance Committee, Richard Hertzold from the Capital, um, Planning Committee, and then Jerry Finn as the resident, um, member.
Yep, and then Mr. Davis as well.
Oh, I'm Mr., I'm sorry. And Les Davis will be our alternate, the town moderator.
Motion to appoint is...
Second?
Second, ma'am. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you very much.
You've got three Grove Street residents.
Yep. It's a conspiracy. All right, we have two toll-day requests. So, one is, um, the Friends of the Millville Free Public Library seeking approval to hold a toll day on Saturday, April 12th, with a rain date of Saturday, May 3rd. Police and Highway have approved. So, the motion is to approve the toll day request for the Friends of the Millville Free Public Library for Saturday, April 12th, with a rain day, Saturday, May 3rd, providing that the town hall's day safety, town hall's toll day safety regulations are followed and the town is in receipt of assigned general release and identification form. So, move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The second toll day is for the Centennial Celebration Committee seeking approval to hold toll day on Saturday, May 31st. Also, the Fire, Highway, and, uh, Police were all notified and, and they have no problem. So, to approve the toll day request for the Centennial Celebration Committee for Saturday, May 31st, providing that the town's toll days' safety regulations are followed and the town is in receipt of assigned general release and identification form.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and then, now we have the special and annual town meeting warrants, we have the first draft.
On that, Mr. Chairman, I would suggest that, uh, we only briefly discuss, uh, the articles on the, uh, financial articles.
Mm-hmm.
Go into discussion on the Select Board articles.
All right, so, uh, I guess, all right, the Board of, so, Board of Selectmen, which is Article 2, we're gonna be going over a lot of this tomorrow night with the finance, so we'll let them do theirs tomorrow night. But, uh, Article 2, which is recommend submitted by the Board of Selectmen to see if the town will vote to authorize a town treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen to borrow money in anticipation of revenues of the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2014, in accordance with the provisions of Mass. General, General Law, Section 44, subsection 4, and to issue a note for notes or notes thereof are therefore payable within one year and to renew any notes as many as may be given for a period of less than one year in accordance with the provisions of Mass. General Law, Section 44, subsection 17, uh, chapter 44, sorry, subsection 17, or take any other action in relation there to.
So, motion to...
Are we, are we voting about Bob? Will it be a 4-0-3-1? Is there time to...
Um, the board has to sign these at your next meeting, on the 22nd. But you'll be meeting at least one more time, which is tomorrow night to go over them, and likely one more time after that before your next meeting.
Hmm.
I think, you know, when you have all five members there, I mean, when's that next? If Bob's gonna be in town, is it on a Monday evening?
The next meeting's another Tuesday.
Yeah, that's when we're signing.
Um, Wednesday, um, tomorrow night, and then if we do need another one, it was gonna be tentative for the following Wednesday. I'm not sure if he's available.
But, I mean, we can also do phone with him, we can actually have him...
He can't vote on it.
He can't vote, that's right, you know, phone. No, okay.
What do we do?
Yeah, no, that's fine, I just thought if there was an opportunity to have the full membership, then that would be...
Do we have to, Jennifer, do we have to have it on a Wednesday? Can we change it, so he's, like, on a Monday?
Yeah, you could do it next Monday, if you wanted to meet on the 14th.
I really...
Just to go over Oz, I mean, by then, the Finance Committee will have, they can do our own vote.
I'd really like to see a full board like that.
If he can do that. And now, with this in question, let's back up to the beginning of the meeting, where we, he said table, he asked if we could table the organ, reorganization for the next meeting, which is a Tuesday night, and I don't know that he's aware of that.
Yeah, he might know.
So, I wonder if we could table it until...
I mean, we know he's usually home on Mondays.
If we make that Monday meeting, table the reorganization for that meeting as well.
For that Monday's meeting.
Yeah.
So...
And then just vote on all of the items.
That's one, that's one.
Yeah.
The 14th at 7:00.
Five on A.
I can meet earlier.
So, what would that be?
People like earlier.
Yeah.
April.
14th of April.
Okay.
Could we, could we, um, not read the article itself, but just kind of the gist of it? And then see if there's any discussion that needs to happen, rather than... Because, I mean, some of them are very procedural, and we do them year after year.
Yeah.
So...
All right, Article 3, submitted by us, is, uh, the Highway Department, Chapter 90, and that's...
Procedure.
If we, if we can just say, if we could, we arrive at a consensus or whatever, or...
If there's discussion?
Yeah, if there's any discussion.
Questions or problems?
Any questions on that one? That's typical. Article 4, revolving funds, that's pretty typical.
Yeah, on this, you're, you're seeing, uh, the senior center adding two, um, beginning FY15. One is for the facility rental income, and the other is for the, uh, van ridership donation, so those are new.
And then, Article 5, cable licensing fees. I think we all remember, is it increase every...
Yeah, that's helping our town.
Yeah, and it just helps the town. It's, it's actually, it's an article that gives us one.
Yes.
Imagine that. So, Article 6 is a collective bargaining agreement, uh, with the police.
However, um, I know we can't discuss that in public. Are we coming to a close that we could have an executive session to hear how that's going, or...
Tonight?
Oh, that's right, it's on tonight, I saw that. That's right, because we had two...
Tonight, that's why he's here.
That's right, we had two items, sorry.
I see, you thought he was just here because he liked us.
No, I, no, because I remember reading that the first one got canceled.
Yep.
I'm good, okay. Thank you.
All right, Article 7, submitted by Valley Tech, uh, yeah, Valley Tech.
Now, this is the...
Expansion.
Expansion.
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, then, Article 8, submitted by Capital, uh, Program, uh, let's see, Fund the Capital Budget. Article 9, Fiscal Year 2015 Budget, uh, we don't have that completed yet.
Can we have a draft of, um, ThinkCom, what their, where their draft is currently?
The budget? You're gonna get that tomorrow night?
Tomorrow night.
You want? Oh, okay.
My daughters have something.
Oh, okay.
Kind of, I don't plan those things, they tell me when to show up, type of things, so... But I'll, I'll, if it can be left in my box.
Article 10, Stabilization Fund, we don't really... Town offices, uh...
Yeah, anyone?
Article 12, with streetlights.
No problem.
That's the same as every year. Town, uh, Article 13, Town Clerk.
Well, 13, 14, and 15.
Yeah.
All of the changing from, um, elected to appointed to Town Clerk, Highway, and Tree Warder.
Right.
I don't have any questions, I just have opinions, so I'll save those.
Yeah, I got opinions on those three too, but I'll save it for the town meeting. Um, Article 16, forum voters.
And Mr. Davis, um, did ask me later today if I could amend his article to change the, the, he's requi, requested to lower it to 30. He asked if I could change that to 20, he's changed his mind, so that would be...
I question, I love...
We don't wanna go below 40, is it?
I love the moderator, I love the moderator, but if anything, I'd wanna see increase, because I think people, when they stop getting services, they really get up to meetings.
Yeah.
And I understand that a lot, well, I think that the premise was, and if I recall correctly, a few years ago, when he started going to the conferences, there's some communities that have, there is no forum level. They're just, whoever's there is there.
That can be dangerous.
Sounds like a socialist community.
And, so, I, I didn't like it then, I don't...
I say it on my...
I don't like it now. I'd rather see it increase than decrease.
You don't like the, the, him bringing it down?
Bringing it down, if anything, I think it should go up to bring people in.
I agree.
You know, because when you stop, if you say, "If you don't go and they don't approve budget, you're not gonna get your trash picked up." Tell you, everyone's gonna be there. If they say that, "We're not gonna make payment to the schools," or the everything, you know, the, everything shuts down, you know...
If you make it easier for them to stay home, then stay home.
You know, I, I, I just personally don't agree with it.
If you, if you reduce it, you're, you know, you're going in the wrong direction, yeah, yeah, my opinion.
I have to agree with Jennifer and Joe, I think it needs to either stay or go up another 10, or another 20.
But we tried this a couple of years ago, to bring it down.
I think he went for the zero that year, didn't he?
Um, I think it was the previous moderator. I can't remember what number it was going to be.
Yeah, it was going down.
Yeah, it's not going up.
Yeah, no, we gotta...
I think we need to, uh, how you think, like you said?
And remember, the year we didn't have, we had to cancel a meeting, it was a week and a half before Christmas.
Oh, well, yeah, I mean, that's...
So, how do you...
It's all about timing, too.
Yeah, people don't have any concern about town meeting a week and a half before Christmas.
If you think about it, a town meeting, you know, if you're bringing down a 10, you get five...
You get your financing, your Board of Selectmen. You, you get 20 in the room.
Yeah, 10, then we basically run the town, and then that's not a democratic government.
Your moderator, the town clerk, the two people checking in at the back.
Yeah, camera people.
Well, yeah, one or two camera people, I mean, you only need four more people in the audience.
Well, yeah, yeah.
To, I mean, if they're residents of town, um, you know, I mean, you're looking at maybe five people you're gonna have, above and beyond who's already doing all the work.
I mean, figure out 40 people, that's, well, 4% of the registered voters.
We have, well, we have, Pop, yeah, Pop is 31, so...
You got 1,800 registered voters, 1,800...
How much is it?
1,800, so it's about 20%.
I thought it was over 2 for registered voters, 247.
I'm wondering, maybe, maybe, to look at it.
36 people is 20%, slightly over 20%.
40 is a very small percentage of the voters already. When you get to know Joe, there's a...
You know, if you can't make a quorum at 40, then you shouldn't be talking about the town.
Yeah, I mean, I, I know why he's doing it, but...
Yeah.
I don't, I don't, my heart's not in that.
All right. It's that one meeting that got canceled. We had the, we had the extended to January, but...
And the reason why you don't have the, um...
It was the time of the year that we did it.
You do, forget it, you do have the special.
We do. I was reading this online, and I got to the end of this, and I go, "Oh, I'm all done," and click, and then I was like, "Oh, no, there's still more of my packet."
I just call your attention, Article, um...
So, what are we doing with that, with the 40?
Article 3 is still under review by Town Council, so that could change.
Tonight?
No, we'll do it when Bob's here, so, I mean, whatever the vote is about...
So, basically, with this thing right here is, uh...
I'm sorry, not re, Article 6 and 7 are under review.
We're gonna put them under whole.
And maybe, since we are discussing that, some of us have, um, a question, and it was submitted by the town moderator, maybe we could let him know that this was one of the items that the Selectmen... I, I don't want him to find out, I don't want it to be posted in town and him see us. 4-1 vote, 5-1, 0-5, I don't know what the vote's gonna be, but, um, and then say, "Well, nobody ever asked me what it's about," so maybe we could let him know that this is one that, um, some questions came up, and if he, if he wants to be present to explain, then he's more than welcome to be here at that meeting.
Yeah.
If, for some reason, Mr. Baker tells me he would not be able to make a meeting next Monday, do you want me to still post that for the, um, the following Wednesday, the 16th? do you want me to still post that for the, um, the following Wednesday, the 16th?
Do we have?
Or do you wanna hold off?
In conjunction with FinCom?
Your meeting is tomorrow night with FinCom. I suspect that you're not gonna be able to resolve all of the questions on the budget tomorrow night. I suspect you're gonna have to meet with FinCom one more time on the 16th.
Then I.
I suspect you're right.
If, if Bob isn't gonna be here on the 14th, then I have no problem just doing it. One shot on the 16th.
Yep.
Whether we meet a half hour before them or?
Yeah, if he can't make the 14th, then we'll just do it once a day.
What time do they meet?
7:00. And again, this, this is just for the warrants. The budget will still be fluid. And I learned today from Norfolk Aggie that they're not gonna make their decision on acceptance until the vacation week. Um, so you'll likely have to meet again, um, before their public hearing to, to actually finalize the budget, so there, there will be a couple more budget meetings.
And when, when do the students decide? A lot of kids will decide, a lot of kids apply to both.
I think they have, most of the summer can decide. I would say it's July or August.
Yeah, they can.
Right up until.
First day of school, they can say, ha, I'm not going. So, uh, Jesus, so that only gives us a couple of weeks before the town meeting?
Hmm, yeah, it's coming.
About maybe three, almost three weeks. Well, that's what it is, I guess. Well, then all the financial articles, it's the usual, we went over budget on snow and ice.
Yeah, no questions.
Kind of had the control of Mother Nature. Prior year unpaid bills.
That's fine.
Relocation of MSBA funds. Fund the capital budget for public safety radios. Fund the highway dump truck, sorry. Hmm, that's okay.
Well, that's just, that's not a new dump truck, that's just reallocating how we're gonna pay for that so it works for us.
Yep.
Just so no one at home thinks we're getting a new dump truck.
Yeah, yeah, we're not buying another dump truck.
Then.
The town accountant has a couple of, uh, other ideas on how to pay for it.
And all three of these articles, 5, 6, and 7, all have to be run by and approved, not only by our Town Council, but by our Bond Council, which just changed, so that's what the holdup has been, is trying to get in touch with Bond Councils.
Okay. So, again, Article 6 is rescind the borrowing authorized for highway dump truck. And then Article 7 is long-term debt principle, Title 5 receipts reserved. Uh, and Article 8 is classification and compensation plan.
Can we get a copy of, uh, current, um.
Sure.
Classification plan?
Mm-hmm.
And there, is there any reason why we're doing it at the special versus the?
Well, because these positions are effective, the July 1st budget are proposed to be effective July 1st. So, if we do it at the special, we'll be all set to vote the budget.
Okay.
But if we put them on the annual, we'll be voting a budget before we approve the position, so it's.
Yep.
Yeah, none of the, um, none of the amounts, it's just pretty much the titles. It, um, a lot of this will be explained further tomorrow night. Um, we've included the van driver as a new position, and we're just looking to change the titles on a couple. Um, possibly include, um, an assistant town clerk as an official position. And we'll be speaking with the board about, um, including an assistant assessor position as well.
So, those bolded are new.
And generally, the classification and compensation plan is supposed to be reviewed and updated every three years, so we were actually due at this point anyway.
And that's the end of the, I don't think the meeting will go that fast, but, there it is. Wishful thinking. Uh, that's it. So, next we have Members' Forum. Is that you, Joe? Is that me? Did you see the Selectmen's Retreat?
Yes, um, I think Helen did a fantastic job of, uh, of, um, the subject. Um, and basically, um, I would like to, uh, discuss where we're going as a board without voting, just, you know, just to share opinions, what the priorities in the town are, so that we, we get on track and we're in line. And I'm saying that Helen did such a fantastic job in putting that together, but I can't find my copy of it.
Is it here?
Yeah. So, uh, the point she highlighted here, I think, uh, worthwhile discussing. You know, when it comes to the, the fact that, uh, we've got some infrastructure issues in town.
Hmm.
Uh, riding down, uh, Central Street today, the, the shoulder coming towards the bridge for our great distance is, uh, all gone.
Yep.
And at some point in time, that's gonna cost the town a lot of money. Uh, and, um, Jennifer, uh, not long ago, mentioned that the sub base on that is, uh, concrete.
Mm-hmm. Um. That's why the former highway surveyors kinda just patched and did it because the job is gonna be a big job.
Yeah, so, I think we need to think ahead on, on the infrastructure piece. Uh, we've got this building, uh, with the approval of, uh, the, uh, referendum yesterday on the, uh, middle school roof. Uh, we can, uh, forget about using any portion of that school for, if we needed for government purposes, that kinda thing. So, you know, long-term, we need to talk about contingencies.
Yep.
So, if we just could, uh, you know, get, get together and discuss these things and try to get on the, the same channel or, uh, not necessarily on the same channel, but openly discuss these issues among ourselves.
Right, so, that kinda stuff that you're talking about, that you just brought up, is all stuff that needs money, which the master plan that the Planning Board is doing is trying, is in efforts to increase revenue on the town, and that is a key. That's a key that we don't have right now.
The, but, it'd be worth our while, I thought about this, about involving the, the Planning Board in, in those discussions. Because we, we really need some targets or some, um, objectives to look forward to. Uh, otherwise, we can't do any planning. And what we see, what's happened in the school district, um, could happen to the town.
Yep.
They went three or four years with, you know, uh, financial constraints that were not, in my opinion, addressed, uh, earlier.
Well, according to what we heard tonight, hopefully he can change, and change some of the restrictions, so if somebody, like you said, had a company and wanted to do something here, he could just come in, get a, a permit and this and that. He doesn't have to go through all these steps that are kinda like, they say, you know, let's not go in here, there's too much involved. And hopefully, we can lighten that burden up so that we can entertain companies to come in and wanna put a small business in, a little shop or something like that.
So, so, so the bottom line here is with planning input is, is that if the board can arrive at a consensus on how we move forward and, and act in, in the best interest of the town. We're representing the town's people and, uh, we need to, you know, get together.
I think a piece of this is our, our master plan.
Mm-hmm.
Which I believe that they will come to us and say, what do you think? And I think if we've already had that discussion and we have our outline, then that's the piece of the pie that they're gonna want from us and we're doing the legwork beforehand.
Yep.
I mean, that may evolve and change a bit on discussion, but I think it gives it to us. I don't mind doing these things. Um, I think it's, um, I think it allows us some conversation, really some direction, you know, some planning. Um, as being part of my, um, employment, there's certain things that we do that are very similar to this, even though it's a different, um, avenue. But it's those kinda things that, you know, you set it out, you figure it out, you, you plan it out, um, you have a goal, you know, you, you talk about all your problems, you decide what your mission is, what is your statement, and you go with it. It's really a backwards design, not saying, oh, we wanna do this and how are we gonna get there? It's what do we wanna do and, and, and then make that your mission and goal. Um, so, I, I don't have a problem. I don't know if one meeting is this.
Might take.
If a retreat means like poolside in, in a hotel with a masseuse, I'm, I'm right on top of this. I am, I'm willing to dedicate my time. If not, I think maybe it might be something, our summers tend to be a little light at times, maybe do set up some kind of, whether it's our summers or whether it's, you know, or would you think in a one-day kinda?
I'm thinking of one day.
Lots in a room.
Posted meeting, no cameras, but posted meetings, no voting, just some meaningful discussion among us so that we all understand the direction of this board going forward. That's it, that's what I had.
I don't have a problem doing it. I think it might have to wait until after the budget.
Yep.
Oh.
Obviously.
Obviously after the budget, but, uh, I don't, I don't have a problem with that cause I'm fairly busy.
Yeah.
In this period as well, so.
Yeah.
Alright. Alright, we didn't call them retreats when I was in business, it was, uh, they called it self-flagellation.
At my work, they call it, um, mandatory staff meetings.
Oh.
So.
A lot of towns are renaming them strategic planning meetings.
Well, that's the new buzzword, along with, um, professional for schools, it's professional learning communities, along with SMART goals, if you wanna Google SMART goals.
With all due respect to school systems, uh, they, they do their thing. I have, in, in town government, I have a lot of respect for town government, but when it comes to certain things, is that you gotta approach it in a business sense.
Mm-hmm.
So, 44 years of going through these goal meetings and those kinds of things, uh, they worked. They really worked. Uh, what are the sad faces here?
Yep. Uh, final public forum. So, our next regular meeting is Tuesday, April 22nd, 2014, at 7:00 PM. Uh, we're gonna do signatures next, and then I'll be looking for a motion to exit this meeting, to, only to enter.
You don't need to exit regular, you're just going to go into.
Go into executive session under Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Subsection 21A, and, uh, Paragraph 2.
Thanks, Helen.
Uh, and then only to re-enter the, our meeting and, um, to adjourn. And that's it.
Motion. Motion to go into executive session.
Second?
I'll second that.
Alright, all in favor?
Roll call.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.